I'd like to call to order the County of Placer Planning Commission for Thursday, November 4th, 2021. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, there it is back here, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. I guess there's a little rearranging in the House here. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Herzog?
Here.
Mr. Severnson?
Here.
Mr. Haugie?
Here.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for the meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 864 or 8741220, and please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with a hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you're calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allowing for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, EJ, if you could bring us up to date on the planning director's report.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission, EJ Avaldi, with the Planning Services Division. I want to first thank Andrea DeChell, who is doing our clerking for the Planning Commission meeting today, and so thank you. We've seen a lot of each other in the last several weeks. This is, I think, our fourth meeting in the last five weeks, so that makes my planning director's report extremely short. Just a reminder, the November 16th Board meeting, the Board will be taking up three items at the, well, two items that the Planning Commission had recommended, made recommendations on the health and safety element update, and then the housing-related code amendments. We're also going to be doing an overview of the Placer Legacy Program, kind of a history of the last 20 years, and asking for direction on where we go for the next 20 years. With that, upcoming Planning Commission meetings, November 18th, we'll resume our normal schedule, 10:00 AM start. We just have a light agenda for that meeting. That was November 18th, and then on December 9th, that will be our last Planning Commission of the year, and agenda to be determined for that one. So that's all I have.
All right. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? There is, so take it. Okay?
Can you unmute your mic? Jan, if you can hear me, unmute your mic to make public comment.
That's Jane Negri.
Jane, could you unmute to make public comment?
There we go.
Okay.
Oh, well, this is a mistake. I'm not real good with this raising the hand thing. I did not mean to raise my hand for public comment. I want to do it later on the redistricting.
All right. Thank you so much. And just so you know, redistricting will begin at 6:05 PM tonight.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised? Okay. If that's the case, then I am going to close the public comment for matters not on the agenda. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Would any Commissioner like to remove one of the items from the consent agenda? And seeing no Commissioners, does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none in the audience, are there any hand raised? Seeing none, we'll move forward with, I would ask that there be a motion from the Commission. What's that? Not yet, until we get a-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like-
We need somebody to make a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Do we have a second?
Now a second, and this is dealing with the meeting schedule?
Yes. Okay. We have a first and a second now. If you could call roll.
Okay. So we had a first from Mr. Herzog-
Correct.
And a second from Mr. Johnson.
Correct.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Severnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes. All right. We are now moving on to our first timed item, the Morkan variance, third-party appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a variance. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press *9 if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until this item presentation is complete. Stacy Wydra, senior planner, will be presenting the item. Please, Stacy.
Am I on?
You're on.
Good afternoon, Chairman Haugie and fellow Planning Commissioners. I am Stacy Wydra with the Placer County Planning Division up in our Tahoe City office, and I'm here today before you to present a third-party appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve the Morkan variance, PLN 21-00305. To quickly get you oriented as to where the project site is located, it is located in Alpine Meadows, specifically at 1368 Mineral Springs Trail of the Alpine Meadows Unit Number Six subdivision. The property site is governed by the Alpine Meadows general plan and is designated residential, and it has a zone district of RS-PD equals four, which is residential, single-family, combining-plan residential development of four units per acre. We're here before you today to consider a third-party appeal filed by Ms. Peck, Mr. Bronton, and Mr. and Mrs. Mitnick. They are appealing the zoning administrator's decision to approve the variance that he approved at the August 19th zoning administrator hearing, which allowed for a reduced setback of 40 feet 8 inches from the water course setback of Bear Creek, whereas a 100-foot setback is otherwise required for the construction of a new single-family residence and associated garage and exterior patio and deck. On July 20th, 2021, the variance application was submitted for consideration of that reduced 100-foot setback from the water course, and specifically for the construction of a 2,717 square foot residence, together with a 470-square-foot attached garage, and then 287 square feet of exterior space consisting of a covered patio and covered deck. The closest distance of which the center line from the creek variance is requested or was approved is at 40 feet 8 inches. Prior to the August 19th zoning administrator hearing, we did receive four comment letters. Comments were, or concerns, I should say, were relative to issues of using other variances as justification. Comparing properties should establish the maximum proximity, size and height of the residence, and location of the residence as it relates to the creek, and then also to the front property line. So at the August zoning administrator hearing, the zoning administrator approved the variance as requested and was able to make all the findings required for the variance, and with the application of all the required setbacks, the functional building envelope is extremely limited. And so with that, the zoning administrator was able to make the findings that the proposed residence is the minimum departure and is necessary to grant relief from the water course setback in order for the construction of the single-family residence proposed on the proposed property. After the August 2021 zoning administrator approval, the project was appealed, and the appellantants have listed four items of concerns, of which I will go through each of their items throughout my presentation. The first item is that the appellantants had concerns that the variance needs to be reviewed based on its own merits and make sure that the findings can be made, and that circumstances of the property do not warrant a 60% variance from the code. At the zoning administrator hearing, the zoning administrator concluded that the variance findings could be made, and specifically, he identified that the average length of the parcel, let's see if I can get my pointer here, is approximately 108.57 feet, and then with the length, together with the application of all the required setbacks, so the setback from, the 100-foot from the setback from the creek is to this line, the front setback, which is 20 feet from the front property line, and then the sides of 10 feet, when you apply all of those setbacks, the result is a 268-square-foot building envelope, which would limit, that's where you could develop without any variance request. So because of those special circumstances, the zoning administrator was able to determine that the strict application of the development standards, and in this case, it's just the water course setback, because the proposed residence complies with all of the other required setbacks, that it would deprive, or that the variance could be approved, in that if it wasn't, it would be depriving this property owner of privileges of other properties within the RS Zone District for the development of a single-family residence. The second item that the appellantants raised with their concerns is that their comparative properties should establish the maximum proximity from the center line of the creek. Specifically, the appellantants raised concerns that the variance is only justified if the distance from the central line of the creek is not greater than the neighboring properties, and in this case, they identified 55 to 60 feet from the center line to the water course. And that also, they stated that setbacks were introduced to address erosion of the creek and to critically preserve the stability of the land. So these next couple slides that I'm going to go through is just gathered information for your review tonight, and so the first slide being that of just this assessor parcel page, so just 9537 is the page, Book 95, the subject property is number nine right here, and so from just these parcels, 1 through 14, or excuse me, well, assessors' parcel numbers, 1 through 14, the average length is 115 feet, and the average square footage of the residence built on all these parcels is approximately 2,581 square feet. And through these next couple slides, I'm just wanting to depict what parcels have been granted variances to either the front or the water course, and also so you can gain a better understanding of the size of the homes that exist, or if the parcel's vacant. And so this first slide is just the first three parcels, and so, for example, the parcel 1 and 2 are vacant, but parcel number 3 was constructed back in 1993, approved for a water course setback from 65 feet from the center line for the construction of approximate 3,400 square foot residence plus garage on a parcel that has an average length of approximately 126 feet. And then moving just down the road again, just really to depict what has occurred over time, and for example, in 2003, there was a 25-foot center line from the water course that was approved through variance 3581 for parcel 4. And then, it's also important to note that there has been development on properties that have not, did not receive a water course setback, but are developed. So either they were built before the 1994 code, or when the water course setback was introduced into the code, or they received a front variance setback to bring their house closer. But as I mentioned, all parcels have, you know, the average length is 115 feet, and so when you apply the center line from the creek, most of all these residences, if they're constructed, are within that water course setback. And then these are just the three remaining parcels to show and demonstrate the characteristics of the area. And then this next slide is just to get you acquainted specifically to one of the neighboring parcels to the south. These are not to the same scale, but I just want to note, you know, here is the edge of this residence, so this is the neighboring, this is Ms. Peck's and Mr. Bronton's, and then the Mitnick's, the other appellantants, their line of their, or excuse me, of their house is approx, is right here. So it's just to get you oriented as to the orientation of the homes, together with the space and outdoor space and the residence itself. And then this slide is also to give you a picture of the corner of the two residents as it relates to the proposed residence that is before you today. So the second item of the appellant's letter was, or excuse me, was about the comparative properties, and that the zoning administrator concluded at the water, at the zoning administrator hearing that the water course setback was introduced to the code, like I mentioned, in 1994, but that also, with the code section, it does allow for variances to be considered and reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator also concluded that Bear Creek does meander, and so setbacks are all different based on where the creek is located, or I should say, the center line of the creek behind each individual parcel. The zoning administrator also stated that majority of the parcels along Bear Creek are located within that required setback, like I mentioned, and that some have either a front setback variance, or a water course setback, or both, and then others were just approved with building permits, so maybe prior to 1994 they were constructed. The zoning administrator also determined that the residence proposed is comparable due to the average parcel lengths and the location of the creek, because the creek does kind of turn in closer to the parcel and then kind of meanders away as it heads down, down to the Trekkie River. And then specifically, that the wall of the proposed residence is approximately 50 feet 6 inches from the center line of the creek, and it is the exterior covered deck and patio that is the most encroachment into that water course setback. And so the zoning administrator concluded that the residence is in keeping with the neighborhood, and previously, residence is constructed along the setback areas of Bear Creek's water course setback. The third item that the appellantants raised concerns about was that the project site physical conditions should be considered with relationship of the residence and its proposed construction. The proposed residence is too big for the parcel size, which impacts area available for snow storage, and drainage impacts to adjoining properties relative to snow shed. So just to get you familiar with the project site, I've listed some of the characteristics here. It is approximate 8,143 square foot parcel in size. It has an approximate slope of 16%, a downslope from Mineral Springs Trail to Bear Creek. Again, Bear Creek meanders along the rear of these properties, and that there has been substantial grading done, conducted on the site through the approval of a grading permit. The project proposal before you today is for consideration of a water course setback of 40 feet 8 inches, and that is to the eve of the covered deck, again, from the center line of Bear Creek. The actual covered deck itself is 43 feet, and then, as I mentioned, to the residence, they are proposing 50 feet 6 inches to the wall. It's important to note that the proposed construction of the residence is not within the 100-year floodplain, but as a condition of approval implied by the Engineering and Surveying Division, they, applicants are required to go to, or go through, the floodplain administrator to ensure that the project's design complies with the flood damage prevention ordinance. And so what this will do will ensure not only impacts to the residence, but also to adjoining neighbors and properties. And so also, to ensure no impacts, the project, or the applicant, will be required to install temporary and permanent BMPs, which are designed to address those very issues. So at the zoning administrator hearing, the zoning administrator stated that he understood that this residence proposed is larger than the existing residences, specifically on both sides of the proposed parcel. However, he determined that it is not out of character of the neighborhood, and specifically is not out of character of the residences along Bear Creek, and that they vary in size as you go up and down Mineral Springs Trail. He further concluded that the proposed residence complies with all of the other development standards, so I mentioned the setbacks previously, but also coverage and height, but with the exception of the water course setback, and again, it pretty much consumes the property. The other item of their, third item, was with regards to snow storage concerns, and they were concerned about that there's not enough snow storage for the driveway, the driveway berm, and the uncovered walkway. And staff reviewed their snow storage areas and has determined that there is sufficient areas. Here's the uncovered walkway, it goes to right about here, and then here's the driveway. So these two areas right here result in a total of approximately 1,1100 square feet, and staff has determined that that is adequate snow storage area for the 585-square-foot driveway, together with the 50-square-foot uncovered walkway. The last item that the appellantants raised was with regards to the Bear Creek Planning Committee, otherwise known as the BCPC, and that they made no evaluation of the 100-foot setback issue. And the BCPC is the Homeowners Association Review Committee for Development within Alpine Meadows area. So in other words, anyone who would like to construct within Alpine Meadows and they're governed by the BCPC, they need approval from the BCPC before they can apply with the county. So it's staff's understanding that they had a couple meetings, that they discussed the proposed residence, and that there was discussion of the location of the residence and the possible relocation of it, in other words, moving it forward into the front setback. But as a result of it moving forward, it's understood that there was concerns about snow storage, so reducing snow storage in the front if the house came forward. So the conclusion at the BCPC was that they may not have addressed the water course setback, but they approved the location of the residence that was then submitted to the county, and that review process was also based on comments and neighborhood meetings that the BCPC held as well. So at the zoning administrator hearing, the applicant did offer to relocate the residence into the front setback, understanding that an additional front setback variance would be required, and he would have to come back to the zoning administrator, but he was not, he wasn't certain that he would get approval from the BCPC as it related to the issues that were raised with regards to the snow storage. So the zoning administrator acknowledged that there are many houses in the area that consist of minimum parcel depths, that residents are either pushed forward or back due to the conflicting setbacks that we have, and that the zoning administrator also acknowledged the BCPC process and its approval. And with that, the zoning administrator found that he was able to make all of the findings for the variance, and that the variance was warranted due to the size of the parcel, together with the application of the water course setback. So with that, the Development Review Committee is requesting that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the zoning administrator, and also approve the variance request, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings contained in the staff report. So-
Thank you, Stacy.
That concludes my presentation.
All right. Commissioners, questions? Stacy? I have a question. Originally, when the subdivision was approached, what was a backyard setback? I know, but they don't really work.
There we go. So it's for two or, for two or more stories, it's 20 feet. For a single story, it's 10 feet.
Okay. All right. No other questions, and at this point in time, the applicant, do you have a representative that is going to make the presentation? To the appellant, the appellant. Not the, I said appellate, appellant. I am sorry, the appellant. If, you know, preferably, the appellant has a single voice, makes a presentation, then anyone else wants to speak can come during public comment, but now's the time for the appellant to make their statement. Yes?
I spin over to that point. Wait, I have copies of all of this for each one of you.
If you could give that to the clerk.
Where do I go? I'd like to not do this one first.
I think you can, if you'd like, this can just go, yeah, so you can-
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'd like to start with this one. We actually have no opposition at all to give the applicant a variance. This is not about not having a house here. We bought this property in 2018 with the intention of staying there for the rest of our lives. My wife and I have raised our children and gone to Dela Earl High School and Franklin School. We're local South Placer County folks that moved up the mountain to retire. We bought our home, and basically what happened at that time in 2018 is my wife walked through the front door, walked straight out into the deck, turned around and looked at me and said, "I want to buy this house," without even seeing the upstairs. There actually is an upstairs to our house. I have the plans right here that I can share with you that show that the planning department determined in 2008 on the approved plans that I have, and that the rear setback was 10 feet, not 20 feet. The front setback, 20 feet, and the side setback on our plans was seven and a half feet. Those numbers are in here. This is a picture of what will happen in the likelihood that you're going to approve this. You see this red line right here? That line is our house, the back wall. This is our neighbor's corner point right here. This area right in here is the area that's going to be occupied by this home. The home itself, right here, has a rear position, right here, that looks like a deck, but it's actually a deck. It's a ground floor patio with a second floor deck and a roof on top of that. It's very large, it's going to extend way into our property, overlooking us and basically looming over us and looking down on our property. That is the only issue that we have with this today. Our request is that you approve a variance, and you do it with our considerations as well. Our property is drastically impacted by this situation. There's a very simple solution to all of this. What hasn't been disclosed is that up here, you see this little dotted line? That's the parcel line. The community is very unusual. It was developed in 1960. The community has a variance problem because there's 43 parcels on the creek. All of them require variance for any kind of approval. There's no rear setback established. It's variable. It provides the staff with a subjective position to try and convince the group here that this is a reasonable direction to go. And maybe it is if there wasn't a creek and it wasn't looming over the top of our house. The solution is really simple. There's a 20-foot setback from here to there that is the same as ours. This is 20 feet right here. That's the last page in your booklet there. That's right here. You can see our parcel line is 7.1 feet right here, and it's 20 feet to the street. So what we're talking about is a setback on the parcel map, not on the actual street. So if you go back to this map, whoops, where'd it go? You can see that up here, there's 14 feet, it goes from the street to the parcel. So the actual parcel is sitting 14 feet behind the street. There's 14 more feet that's open for use of all of these properties. The back end right here is also 14 feet. In fact, from this point to this point, and from this point to that point, our two homes are almost exactly the same. The problem is, is that this design is being orientated on this lot to push it far back into our kind of area back there, and it's not giving us- into our kind of area back there and it's not giving us the ability to continue to have our property be a place that we can have quiet enjoyment and have our property rights protected. We feel that the solution is really simple. Move this building 14 feet, you'll still have 20 feet. You'll have a lined up back as Stacy just showed you between the two points. So the two homes, instead of being like this, would be like this. They would be lined up and they would be like a normal subdivision, Lincoln, Loomis, Rockland, Roseville. Every one of these places have large subdivisions. They all have setbacks. They don't have a variable. You have a situation here where you can fix this today and make this all be done if we simply move this parcel or this building envelope forward and provide relief for our property. The actual interesting part here too is that this is the corner point of the front of our house and this is the corner point of our garage. You can see there's like, I don't know, 18 feet between our corner point and the front point, corner point here. So by moving the home and positioning it on the lot a little bit more forward, you'll give us relief. Everybody will get something that they can live with. Mr. Morkan can go about his business and build his home. We have no interest in being in his way. I think this is really unfair to him and us. All of us are kind of stuck with this because there's no rear setback setup. When we bought our house in 2018, this was the parcel map that was provided during our due diligence. This is what we reviewed to approve the purchase of our home. The two points are the yellow dotted line with the red dots on it. You can see that right there. And so there's the corner point. Now you go to what is going on now. Told you I'm not good at this. You can see that that corner point here and here has a large, essentially three-story structure looming over our deck. They'll look literally right down onto our deck and into our living room. If it's moved forward, everybody looks into the creek and everybody has basically the same general privacy position established and they can all kind of move forward without staring at each other and creating issues. Really, all we want you to do is is approve a variance that doesn't destroy our property value and turn us into the victims. You you have a subjective decision here. You're going to reward one and maybe have a winner and a loser where if we agree to do this in a manner where that house is shifted, everybody gets a reasonable resolution and we can move forward with this.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of the appellant?
I talked too fast.
Let me have a question. Have you talked, have you talked to the applicant and and suggested that?
Say that again.
Have you spoken with the applicant and suggested moving his house back?
He said he would do this at the BCP meeting. He said he would do it at the zoning administrators meeting. I'm really glad you brought this up because one of the key issues that I see, I've been a commercial real estate broker in this county for 30 years. I've done CUPs many times. The the process has a communication benefit. If you talk to people and find out their concerns and what areas of interest they have, you'll actually flush out the issues at the beginning of this and make it a lot easier. To this day, I have never spoken to Mr. Morkan. I have never spoken to anybody from the county other than at these meetings. It seems illogical. We need to communicate.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the question is, actually, next, to to see if the applicant is available to make a statement.
We would support the applicant at BCPC. I know they'll move it. Everybody's driveways are goofy.
Yeah, understood. No, I just was wondering if the applicant is online. Okay. So if we could hear what the applicant has to say.
Is it, who's it? Is it Lee?
Oh, it is Audrey.
Wash, I am speaking on behalf of Bob Morkan as well as Joe Quinn. Thank you for taking the time to to hear my statement. Thank you for taking the time to consider this issue that is before you. I I do agree with a few things that the appellant's had to say, that all of the houses on Mineral Springs Trail do require variances and that this process has in fact been unfair to Mr. Morkan. The appellant's own letter stated face that they failed to express exactly the legal basis or factual basis for their appeal. And it appeals, it appears that from the appellant's statement today that that is because there isn't a legal or factual basis for the appeal. This appeal isn't based on either the fact that there aren't special circumstances or the fact that the variance is too large. This appeal basically is based on the fact that the appellant's want to be able to control where this home is placed. But in fact, where this home is placed is controlled by the plans that are generated by the applicants as well as the BCPC's approval. At the BCPC meeting, the applicants proposed to move the home forward into the snow storage setback and the BCPC decided not to have the home moved forward into the snow storage setback. That is perhaps in part because the appellant's house at 1362 Mineral Springs Trail already encroaches 13 feet into the snow storage setback and leaves less than 45% of that setback area available for snow storage directly adjacent to the project parcel. The zoning administrator was correct in deciding that front setbacks must be considered in conjunction with rear setbacks because they are necessarily countervailing issues that must be addressed together because it is the combination of those two setbacks which create the special circumstances which necessitate a variance. So when we look at the front setbacks for 13, for the adjacent parcel at 1362, we see that it's seven feet, that it only has a seven-foot front setback and that it has a 54-foot rear setback yielding a total of a 61-foot setback. Turning to the project parcel, we see that it has a full 20-foot setback and a 40-foot eight-inch water course setback yielding a 60-foot eight-inch total setback from the front and rear. So then we see that the project parcel and the appellant's parcel actually are within nine inches of each other in total front and rear setback, showing that the actual total setback for this project is completely consistent with what is occurring in the area. And then if we turn to the the size of this project, I think Stacy's use of the assessor's parcel map to show that all 14 parcels on that map average a mere 200 square feet less than the proposed project shows that the proposed project is distinctly within the size of what is being currently built within that area. Thus, I would urge the the commission to uphold the decision to approve the variance in order to allow this parcel to be allowed to have the same privileges that the other parcels in the neighborhood have been allowed to have. Finally, I would like to address the issue of the unpermitted back deck that is and spa It is found at the adjacent parcel.
I believe we have your letter describing that.
Okay, yes. I would just note that 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 spa is completely unpermitted. That unpermitted work was done within the setback area and without a permit which would have resulted in a reassessment and that such disingenuous actions go directly towards the appellant's credibility. That credibility is further undermined by the appellant's submission of a of a plot survey which shows the total coverage for 1372 Mineral Springs Trail, but not the second floor. And by omitting the second floor, they drastically under-report the actual square footage of that property when the actual square footage of that property is consistent with the project parcel. I thank you all for your time and consideration and urge you to uphold the approval of this variance to allow the applicants the same privileges as the other individuals in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none? At this time, I'd open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none? Do we have somebody on Zoom who would like to speak? What's that?
Yes, I'm, this is, I'd like to.
Yes, we can hear.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You have three minutes.
I I'm actually one of the, I and Lee Rotten are also among the appellant's and I believe it was Mr., I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, Tuachi, 24, appearing for Mr. Morkan. I just wanted to address a couple of his points. I agree with Mr. Mitnick in the sense that, you know, we haven't actually had communication from the county about potential resolution of this issue. The only communication we received from Mr. Morkan or Mr. Quinn about this, the whole issue came after we filed the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision, which was perfectly well and within our right to do so at this public setting. And the only time we got a response or any communication was a letter which I have submitted to the commission in which Mr. Morkan's attorney, or the applicant's attorney, excuse me, essentially retaliated against us in my view and intimidate, trying to intimidate us to basically drop the appeal. I I don't think that's appropriate. I believe that the statements that he's made with respect to work done at our property are inaccurate. We have responded to those issues. We've now received a letter from the county of that effect. We're happy to work with them as well. To say that we were being disingenuous, however, I think is a little inappropriate for these proceedings and I will leave that part at that. With respect to the standards for the variance, I I understand that it's it's a very small buildable envelope at the property. And prior to Mr. Morkan and Mr. Quinn purchasing this property for their their investment and building purposes, it was owned by another couple who obviously had the same issue. They had plans for approximately 1,700 square foot home. They were approved for a 50-foot setback from the center of the creek and the neighbors did not object. And frankly, we wouldn't have objected at that point either because it is in keeping with, as the diagram that Mr. Mitnick provided you, the corners lined up. It's in keeping in both size and scope. It's in keeping with the setback. It's in keeping with the neighborhood. With respect to the way it's situated now, I would submit that while the the condition of the property itself, leaving a small building envelope of, I think Ms. Widra said it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 268 square feet, something to that effect, that's one thing. But the size and scope of a project that you choose to put on that property, knowing the size of a small building envelope, knowing the variances that would have to be obtained, is a choice. That part of it is not necessarily a special circumstance warranting such a large variance because the standard is not only a special circumstance.
Your three minutes are up, so if you could conclude your statements?
Sure. We would agree that the locate, it wouldn't be unheard of for this commission nor would it be unreasonable to request or require a redesign of the property to shift the location or to perhaps scale it back somewhat, simply to be in keeping with the remaining properties and its neighbors and not to create a detriment to those properties as have been outlined both in this hearing and in our submitted papers. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello?
Hello. We can hear you.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. So proceed, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Kate Abraham. I live actually across the street at 1369 Mineral Springs Trail. So I'm across from the proposed project. And I just want to say on my behalf, I know the other neighbors are saying they want to propose it to move forward. I am very against that. I was against that in the BCP meeting, BCP PC meeting, and I'm against it now. So that isn't being spoken on the behalf of all the neighbors. I've lived here for about 11 years and the snow storage that that would create, I think, would be significant if you were to move forward and ask the property to ask for a variance to the street. So I just wanted it to be spoken that I am not for that.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there other persons who want to speak on Zoom? No one else on Zoom? Actually, no, that, we're we're not going back there. Comments have been received from the appellant and the applicant. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And Stacy, is there any response that you would like to make based on the statements
I think the only thing I would just like to to share or remind you is that if if the project were to be moved forward, we would have to go through a front variance setback through that whole process again. So unless, can the commission make that?
So Kate, can the can the residents be shifted to the front setback?
Right.
Without, it can be shifted so far without a setback variance, correct? Or is it right at the setback?
It's right at the setback. So that, I'm sorry, that's more or less what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, the request for another variance.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission that can be addressed?
What about the person that's hearing?
Actually.
Appellant, kind of answering the questions.
Okay, we can do that. So you may, as the appellant, you may answer any questions that came up.
I wanted to address, I'm not sure how to say his name either, the applicant's counsel. There's another thing that I had, I'm nervous, sorry, guys. This is a other version of parcel map in the area. And you can see that in this little section here, all of these parcels are not lined up on the street here. So there's all this little gap in here. I went out this morning in the rain and the cold and I measured the driveways. Ours is from the garage door 20 foot, seven inches. Paul Wagner's is across the street. He'd just built this house. It's really nice. And Mr. Morkan's house is going to be really nice, too. This is 20 foot, six inches. This one's 13 feet. Lisa and Liz is 25 feet. And and what I'm trying to say is is that most, all of these houses have both a front and rear adjustment to make this work for the whole neighborhood. And really, like I said, all we're looking for is a situation that won't dramatically impact our house. I just wanted to make sure you saw this and how it works. For what it's worth, Kate lives right here and she and I talked about this and I actually put that in my letter that she was opposed to moving it forward. So for what it is, that's what it is.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
And this may be just a clarification question, but.
Say that again.
This may be a clarification question, but at any rate, now your house is up to 20 foot from the roadway, right?
From what?
Your garage is 20 feet from the.
From the street.
From the street.
Right.
And so is that a variance that you had?
I have no idea. My property was all done when I bought it. It was all done in 2008, 1996 and 1972. So whatever exists there, we just inherited when we purchased it. I'm sure there had to be some process that went through, but according to these plans that we have, it shows that our front setback's 20 feet and our rear is 10 and our side's seven and a half. And there are all these different numbers bouncing around. I really don't know what's the right number. What I do know is is that if this is approved, this house is literally going to be staring down on top of us. And it's a simple fix just to shift it forward a few feet. We're talking 14 feet. We're not talking about a big difference here.
Okay, well, I have a, I want to follow up a little bit more. We've we've heard you say what you just said already.
Okay. Thanks.
So at any rate now.
Are you done with me?
One of the concerns is, you know, one of the other people mentioned was the snow storage.
You know?
And so what's your situation on?
I do my own storage. I have for the last. I do my own storage, I have for the last three years. And in reality, what's happening with the snow storage is this, I don't know where that map is for the other person with the red squares that I think you did, but my snow storage on this side is huge. There's another creek there. So there's a creek on our side and a creek on our back. It's a huge indentation, and it allows for significant snow storage to go, whoops, to go this way. Here is our propane tank, and that little dot right there is a fire hydrant. The, the county takes care of the roads, and the fire department has a front loader that they come in and remove the snow with in front of that fire hydrant. That's a significant amount of snow. If you've ever been up in Tahoe, they come by with a grader, and they burn us all in. And that berm builds up over the top of that fire hydrant, and then they come in with the front loader, and they scoop it up, and they put it on both sides of the fire hydrant. The snow storage in this area, this little red square that was up here, there's two trees right here, and then there's the propane tank, the fire hydrant. And if you put the driveway this far back, you're adding 18 feet across the width and 14 feet of the depth. It's a significant amount of more snow that has to be moved. Putting it on this side, right in here, is probably logical, but you're going to have the street and the fire hydrant. And then right here, I see these circles, there's three really big pine trees. They're like this big around, they're huge. They're going to stop the snow from being able to go through them. When they bring the barrel blower in, that giant machine you see on the freeways that this county uses to clear the berm piles that they make, that thing shoots the snow. In fact, most of the houses have plywood sheets in front of their windows to prevent that from breaking their windows as it goes by. That is going to have a real problem with the Peck-Broughton snow removal and their snow removal. And this area in here is really going to be the whole thing for all of it. Ms. Abramson's lives on the other corner.
So I'm kind of missing your, your point here. You're saying, what's going to be a problem for the other neighbors on the other side?
I think the snow removal's a problem for everybody. There's not enough snow removal, uh, storage is what I'm set, trying to say. The snow removal's not a problem, you can take it out. But when you have.
Yeah, snow storage, yeah.
Yeah, if you have to store the snow on your parcel, you have a situation where you have a significant amount of, of snow. The April home here is on a corner, so they get double it. They get the berm from this side and the berm from this side. So what happens is when the guy comes down from this direction, he berms us up right in here, and if you're going to try and put that snow anywhere, so he's coming from this direction, going this way, and he is burming us in. We just had one storm, one day, we had three feet of snow, it was all heavy wet snow, it was very hard to move. That snow created a berm that was this high in front of our house. It was really a significant amount of snow. That's just one day. Last year and the year before weren't as bad. 2018, we had a 20-foot-high snowbank on both sides of our driveway. My snow blower has a 25-foot throw, it could barely make the snow to the top. It was really a challenge.
I think what you're saying, though, is that on one side of your house, you have a creek that they can put all the snow in.
I have a place to put it.
And?
And they don't.
And so that's what we're talking about here.
So I see where the, the, the challenge is. You, you, you have the snow issue, you have the, the potential to try and make the neighborhood a little bit less, I guess, unhappy, and make everybody a little bit happier, but you've got to balance it all out. And, and if 14 feet's too much, you know, give us 10, give us something. Don't put that house so that it's looking down at me like it's a skyscraper.
Yeah, I hear the issue that you have, I'm just wondering about.
How to bounce it?
The process it would take to change this, and.
Well, if you have a, a, a deep driveway, then you have less snow that you're moving from the driveway, but it doesn't change the street or the fire hydrant.
What I'm questioning is if the homeowners association would really go along if the, if snow storage is a problem, if they would go along with moving that house forward.
I think that they will. If you look at all these houses, and if you look at Stacy's map, too, you can see the little gray outline of the houses themselves. And, and what will happen here is, is that all of these homes have the same problem. They all have roughly a 20-foot or enough depth to get a car in. But to get the snow into a, a more manageable position is, is really hard. It, it's not something that, it really takes me a lot of work to do it. I've been doing it here and in Carnelian Bay and in North Star for years, and.
I understand the problem with snow. I used to live in Chester, so I understand that.
Okay, good. Well, snow's a big issue, but having a giant house looking down on your backyard, that's a big issue, too.
That's the only issue you have?
I would be totally happy if that issue was resolved. And, and I feel that that issue is, is a significant one.
Well, have you made an attempt to actually talk to the person next door?
I have not. I have actually stood down, waiting for this whole process to kind of go through its process, to see what was going to happen. My wife and I actually talked about doing that a couple days ago. I would welcome that conversation anytime, and I would totally support helping them go through BCPC. BCPC has already approved driveway issues. Some of these houses have a driveway that's literally like three feet deep.
But they're going to have to.
They've got to figure it out.
If they, if they agree with you, if you talk to them at this late date, then they're going to have to pay to go probably through the homeowners association all over again, and they'd have to have some of your support in that, I'm sure, too.
It's not really a homeowners association, it's a design review board. We don't have a homeowners association, we don't have CCNRs. That's not how it works. They just have this position, I don't know how it came to be, but these people on this board, if you want to put in a jacuzzi, if you want to get your house painted, if you want to get a new roof, you know, anything that's aesthetic from the outside of the house is what they deal with, they don't deal with the orientation on the lot. They specifically told us they wouldn't. They sent us to the county.
All right.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit puzzled by that, but that's fine, thank you for your.
Me, too. Thank you.
All right. With that, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Rich?
Yeah, I don't know exactly, I'm. You know, this is the type of problem that sometimes neighbors can resolve without going through a, a process.
Correct.
And so, I mean, that's what I'm struggling with is, but at this late date, since we're already up to a variance and an appeal, you know, the conflict's already there, so I don't know how you're going to resolve it, to tell you the truth.
Other comments, discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand the issue. After reviewing the material and, and thinking about what the zoning administrator had to go through, thinking about the front setback and, and, and the, you know, the creek setback and awareness, understanding the snow issue in the community, I think I would have arrived at the same decision as the zoning administrator. I, I'm having a difficult time having data or understanding why I would overturn the decision. So I can't put my finger on something that would give me the authority to overturn the zoning administrator decision. My hope, as you guys have alluded to, is this can be a neighbor resolved issue. And, and I've heard that the applicant has offered to move it forward in, in some, some things I've read. I'd encourage that conversation, I'd encourage the, the neighbors to talk about that. But what I've read, and what I understand, I couldn't give evidence and data to overturn the decision that was made. That, that's kind of where I'm at. But other thoughts from my colleagues?
Sam?
As the former president of my HOA for 17 years, I saw these, these kinds of issues all the time. And unfortunately, it's exactly what my two colleagues have alluded to, is, is that there is not that kind of communication, which there should be, so that we don't have to go through this, this legal process and arrive at these, these conclusions. Each one of those properties on that street is unique. And one, you know, the set of rules that the county has in place unfortunately don't always work to the best advantage of each one of those unique properties. So the zoning administrator rabbled with, in my opinion, making the best of a difficult decision. But I, I would concur with my colleagues and try and come to some, some more reasonable accommodation, and having the neighbors work together to try and do that. So that, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying about looking right down above you. You know, I had exactly that same issue when a homeowner in my association, my former association, the next door neighbor was going to put a window and a deck in there, and was going to look right into the other person's backyard and their pool and all that. So it is a difficult decision, I hope that makes some sense. That concludes my comments. Thank you for your presentation, for both you and for the, and, and for your, and for your neighbors.
Any other, Larry, did you have any comment?
Well, I think that, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I think that these are common occurrences that we have to deal with in the high-snow areas like Alpine Meadows, Paw Valley, and others, Sugar Bowl. And it's, it's unfortunately not a perfect world. And, and I think, I think people have to work together to accommodate one another. And not always can you pass rules that, that cause things to be a perfect world, you just, you have rules to go by that minimize the impact and improve the situation. And I think that's what we have here, is we have a, we have a rule being applied that allows a person to conduct their snow removal in a certain way and, and minimize the setback. And I think in some cases, that's appropriate. This perhaps is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, and I would agree with my other commissioners that, you know, from the standpoint of the county, you're, we're to look at the codes and ordinances, and this project meets the setbacks, it meets the heights limits, and the zoning administrator, I think, has made a decision based on the rear setback, and that we don't have authority over homes towering over other homes or design that's not in our purview. So, you know, I'm of the opinion that the appeal should be denied. So I would call for a motion?
Also move, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have a second? I'll second.
If I could, just before we have a second, just clarification on the motion would be deny the appeal, and also uphold the decision of the zoning administrator to approve the variance request?
That is, I think that's what you said, isn't it, Larry?
I include that in my findings, yes.
Okay. And we have a second? Richard, okay, so we have a first and a second, would you call roll?
Excuse me, I have a first from Mr. Severson, and a second from Mr. Johnson. Mr. Cannon?
A reluctant yes, but we have to work with the rules that we have that the county, the county governs, so that's my answer.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes. The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Thank you very much. So at this time, the planning commission is going to take a break until 6:05 PM to resume our meeting at that point in time. So we're taking a break. Let's go. I'm calling the Placer County Planning Commission back to order. We are moving on to the second item, the Placer County Redistricting Workshop. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Nikki Strigan, senior planner, will be presenting this item. Nikki? Jane will be presenting the item, and then Nikki.
Good evening, commissioners, members of the public, and certainly the viewing public on Zoom at home. Thank you for joining us this evening for our next advisory redistricting commission hearing. I'm here tonight with our redistricting team, which includes Nikki Strigan and Dennis De Sell of Cedra, who have done a lot of the difficult work of aligning census population data with our current legislative districts to reconfigure the map alternatives that are before you this evening. Just by way of introduction, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jane Christensen. I serve as the assistant county executive officer and have had the pleasure of working with Nikki and Dennis Clayton and others on our redistricting efforts to date. Just a bit by way of background, since I know many in our viewing public didn't catch the meeting last time as it began a bit later, but at our last presentation, we shared that our redistricting website, placer.ca.gov/redistricting, was launched in May of 2021. In the interim, all summer long, we visited with all of our city and town councils, we convened subregional meetings in Tahoe, in mid-placer, and two in south-placer. We advised all of our special districts, we met with the Placer County Water Agency as its boundaries are coterminous with supervisory boundaries, and we even conducted a bilingual hearing in late September to make sure we were conducting outreach to our bilingual Spanish-speaking community. That, in addition to meetings with several chambers, really culminate in the issues that are here before you tonight. On our website, we invite residents to subscribe for updates and receive any additional information on upcoming meetings or milestones in the process. We have had 327 email subscribers to date. We've launched seven email updates over the course of this process on our meetings, on the commission hearing tonight, on the posting of additional information and maps, so that those tuning in could stay apprised as our process moves forward. Since that time, we now have 342 email subscribers, 12 email updates, and a very significant presence on social media, including Nextdoor and other platforms commonly used by Placer County residents. With this, I'd like to turn it over to Nikki Strigan of Cedra, who, as I noted with Dennis, analyzed the census data to build the map alternatives before you tonight that comply with the Rubik's Cube of state and federal criteria, as she will describe.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane. Well, good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
A lot of papers this evening. Thank you for that intro, Jane. So tonight, we're of course presenting not only the staff-generated alternatives, but also going through some of the public-generated alternatives, but senior, sorry, excuse me, Nikki Strigan, senior planner, with your planning services division here at Cedra. I'm going to jump straight in here. So by way of background, again, census review for a lot of folks who have tuned into previous meetings and, and your commission, but the census is completed every 10 years. That's the data set, the foundational data set that we use as part of the redistricting process. The census impacts funding for schools, infrastructure, and housing. The shifts that occur in the census are what informs the redistricting process. That helps, which is the, the process by which we redefine legislative boundaries and is done so to assure compliance with the Voting Rights Act. Jane went through some of the timeline as far as the community meetings that have been held, but you can see here on the timeline where we are at currently in the process as far as data being delivered by the Census Bureau. So the data was delivered by the Bureau in the month of September. On October 14th, that marked the first meeting where maps were published. And so we're kind of marching through this public hearing process all the way up to our adoption date. So currently, we have November 30th on the calendar for a board hearing for adoption, and a deadline of December 15th to the state of California to adopt those maps. In the slide following this one, we'll take a look again at the legal criteria that your commission is required to follow. But in addition to that criteria, the concept of one person, one vote is an important part of the redistricting process. A single elected representative is equally representing their constituents in accordance with population totals in each district. So this slide shows the population change by district on a concept called parity. So that's achieved when each district represents the same amount of people. called parity. So that's achieved when each district represents the same amount of people. You can see in this table the adjustment that each district has to make in order to achieve parity. And that math calculation is done as follows. So this figure right here, 405,306 divided equally by five is 81,061. So that's the total required to achieve parity in each district. If each district were to represent 81,061 people, the, the number on the right of this table shows the change each district would need to make to achieve that. I do want to, want to make a quick correction for the record. The staff report does talk about the deviation that is sort of acceptable. Case law and county criteria have relied on a deviation of 5% or less. The October 14th staff report did note that. October 15th mentioned less than 5%. So I want to make a correction that 5% or less is what we are aiming for, again, aligned with case law and local criteria. The requirements and considerations as part of the map-making process are done aligned with the California Elections Code that outlines the criteria and process. We are also aligning with the Voting Rights Act. And then the criteria up on the screen is what your commission will consider in priority order. And I'm actually going to pull very quickly. I'm going to make sure I read from the Elections Code. But the, your, your commission must consider in priority order the following. Contiguity is the first. So to the extent practicable, supervisor districts shall be geographically contiguous. The second criteria is integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So from the Elections Code to the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division. A community of interest, as we've talked about in previous meetings, is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single supervisory district for the purposes of its fair and effective representation. Communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. The third criteria, third legal criteria is integrity of cities and census-designated places. The code reads, "To the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of a city or census-designated place shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division." The fourth criteria includes natural and artificial barriers, including streets. The code reads, "Supervisory district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents. To the extent practicable, supervisor districts shall be bounded by natural and artificial barriers, by streets, or by the boundaries of the county." And the fifth and final criteria is geographic compactness. That reads, "To the extent practicable and where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria in this subdivision, supervisory districts shall be drawn to encourage geographical compactness in a manner that nearby areas of population are not bypassed in favor of more distant populations." The, the final piece of this is that the board shall not adopt supervisor boundaries for the purposes of favoring or discriminating against a political party. So I do want to emphasize here that these are, we've, we've talked about this before, in priority rank. So one takes precedence over two and so forth. And we want to keep that in mind while we're, while your commission is discussing. We've also talked about a number of additional factors. These are, were developed in consultation with our clerk recorder's office. And I want to clarify again that these come after the federal and state criteria that we just spoke about. So they are as follows. To utilize existing supervisory district boundaries to the extent, to the, to the extent that we're minimizing significant changes to them. Consideration for community plan boundaries and entitled specific plan areas, minimization of segmentation of incorporated cities, a balance of rural and urban constituents in each district, and following existing voter precinct boundaries where possible. I'll make a note here, we, we certainly are going to get into the alternatives assessment. That's attachment A in your staff report. But I'll make a note on precinct boundaries. The, you know, there was a dash in the assessment, as you'll see, under this particular piece of this, this factor. And that is because it's inherently very difficult to follow precinct boundaries. They are complicated. But those do show up because, again, to the extent practicable was something we had written here, and the difficulty of that was something we were, we were noting for all the maps. So what was staff's process related to creating the maps? I want to talk through this a little bit, knowing some of the things that are up on the screen before you. We knew that District Five had to lose almost 13,000 people to achieve parity, and that was achieved by moving into populated areas of Districts One, Districts Two, and Districts Three. District One increased by 35%, which results in the need to reduce that district by just over 16,000 people. And that reduction is achieved by moving portions of District One into Districts Two and Four. And District Two would balance that gain with losses from City of Rockland to District Three. And then modest additions to District Four were needed to achieve parity, which currently includes, and we'll, we'll talk certainly about this because it shows up in a lot of the public-generated maps, but an area of East Roseville along the highway 65 corridor that has some commercial and residential. But of course, District Four also includes a lot of, all of Granite Bay. So I want to, and again, I want to talk a little bit more about map making, because we did receive some comments on that. Staff first began by developing a map, again, with all, all the consideration for the legal criteria that achieved almost absolute parity. We talked, we, we started with that as sort of a base map, meaning, again, equal population between each district. And from there, staff adjusted the lines with considerations for communities of interest, as we had run our survey from June 24th until September 30th. And then, you know, looked at layers, GIS layers, that included census-designated places, natural and artificial barriers, including layers that we have for streets and roads and rivers and those kinds of things. And, and we looked at, again, the other criteria including compactness and the other factors. Staff considered a balance of unincorporated areas and rural areas as well as cities, and that turned into our alternative A. We also considered comments from the City of Rockland and folk, in focusing the City of Rockland into a single district, which developed into alternative B. And then finally, we considered communities of interest in the lower foothill area of Penrin, Newcastle, what, what we'll call kind of greater North Auburn, west of Highway 49, and with consideration for census-designated places like the North Auburn census-designated place, and that developed into alternative C. We did also contemplate a division of Roseville in different configurations. For example, putting Roseville into only two districts as opposed to its current configuration in three districts. And so we're, we're actually going to take a look at two of those concepts here that were not contemplated as actual alternatives, but were considered, were, were concepts as we were working through that process. So this, this first considerate, concept looked at Roseville in Districts One and Four only. Again, looking at Roseville in only two districts was our, our kind of objective looking at the concept. So you can see here, District One includes all of West Roseville, Dry Creek, and West Placer, and excludes an area bounded by Foothill Boulevard, Washington Boulevard, and Industrial Avenue, separating out downtown and nearby neighborhoods of Hillcrest, Folsom Road, Sierra Vista. District Two continues to include the City of Lincoln in this concept and the northwestern portion of the City of Rockland, and moves all the way to Hidden Falls Regional Park, as it does under today's map. District Three is slightly smaller and includes portions of Rockland, all of Loomis, and comes down to the natural boundary of North Ravine, which eventually flows into Auburn Ravine on the valley floor. But it stops just shy of Highway 193 and encompasses all of the Granite Bay CDP. District Four includes more of Roseville, including downtown areas east all the way to Sierra College Boulevard and Douglas and Eureka. And then Five comes across the Highway 49 corridor, similar to some configurations that you've, you've already seen. Again, part of our process was to look at Roseville in just Districts One and District Two. In this concept, District One includes none of West Roseville, but does include Dry Creek, West Placer, and extends east to the eastern Roseville boundary at Sierra College Boulevard. District Two picks up the City of Roseville from Washington Boulevard and loses City of Lincoln to District Three. District Three includes the City of Lincoln, Penrin, and Newcastle, and portions of Rockland. And then District Four includes most of Rockland, all of Loomis, and Granite Pe, Granite Bay. And then finally, District Five looks, again, looks very similar to some other configurations coming across the Highway 49 corridor. Again, these map concepts weren't considered as actual alternatives because of some significant changes to the existing boundaries. And the pointer is acting up on me again, but that's okay. Regarding public input from, is there another pointer? And if there is, I'll, I'll take it when, if, if you find it. As, as far as public input provided since, or rather, at the October 14th meeting, in relation to the October 14th meeting, there were 33 written comments provided, and there were 18 comments made at the actual hearing. Those comments are summarized in the staff report, but some highlights are on the screen before you. They include that rural communities of interest in the lower foothill area was a common theme. City of Rockland constituents' desire to stay in one district. Forest and agricultural issues were noted for consideration, in particular, the rural economy and making sure that's represented. Elimination of the northwestern portion of District Four along Highway 65 was noted by constituents, and it's also reflected in all of the public-generated maps that have been provided to you. And then, of course, alternatives B2, D, P, and P1, and Deanna were submitted by the public. Your commission made comments related to school district boundaries, specifically the division of Loomis Union School District. I do want to just touch on that briefly. School districts undergo their own redistricting process that occurs in spring of 2022. I did reach out to our Elections Office related to, you know, defining boundaries around those school districts. You know, his note was, our, our clerk recorder, county registrar, our voters note to me was, you know, even if boundaries are drawn related to those today, those could change in their, in those districts, special districts or school districts, districts own redistricting process. And there, of course, are more districts than just school districts in this county. They include various other special districts. Let's see. Additionally, your commission had made some comments about modifying map C. So we'll, of course, take a look at that as we go through the actual maps. Importantly, your commission asked staff at the October 14th meeting to analyze the public-generated maps, and bring forward an analysis to inform your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Specifically, that analysis included an assessment of how each map stacked up to the federal and state legal criteria. And then you asked specifically for an assessment that included deviation, number of cities, number of CDPs, number of maps, and an assessment of the additional factors that had been previously discussed. So staff put that analysis together, which is attachment A in your staff report packet, and we're going to go through those in line with each of the alternatives.
Real quick, thank you. I, I think we all appreciated having that matrix. I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
I'll, I'll make a few notes on the assessment before, before we dive in. It was staff's effort, of course, to distill what, you know, this tremendous amount of information and layers upon layers of GIS data that there are, including, you know, cities, CDPs, all of the boundaries that we consider as far as artificial and natural boundaries. It was not intended to be oversimplified by any stretch. Rather, it was a, a distillation of the information and to some, to some extent, a qualitative assessment of what was happening in the maps. I do want to emphasize too, that, you know, even though the staff report had spoken about priority criteria, I want to make sure that, you know, quite, the, the items numbered one through six, or rather, one through five are the highest ranking, which wasn't clear on the assessment table itself, but maybe clear, may have been made clear in previous staff reports. But one through five, of course, are those higher-ranking items than six through 11. Some, some universe, some kind of conclusions, I'll, I'll begin by stating, one of the maps wasn't in complete submission. It was the one that was sort of hand-drawn and the last one that we'll take a look at, because some areas were omitted. But nonetheless, we'll, we'll look at that map. Each map varies by deviation, except for A and B, those share the same deviation, because the, the difference between the largest district and the smallest district by population are the same. All the proposed maps staff had identified were contiguous, so they met priority criteria number one, and followed natural and artificial barriers. So they met criteria number four. The other maps, of course, can be distinguished by their deviation, by communities of interest, varying degrees of city integrity and compactness. And that, I think, is the, the task for your commission this, this evening, is to discuss those distinguishing factors. So I'll, I'll jump in here. Here is alternative A, which was developed with a focus on balancing growth in the incorporated cities with the entire geography of the county. The deviation on this map is 1.70%. And all cities are within a single district except Rockland and Roseville. And all MACs are in a single district except Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, Newcastle, Ofer, and Rural Lincoln. My quick caveat too on MAC boundaries is, you know, there's discussion about those happening at the county level also, and they may be undergoing some shifts. So that, that's something, of course, for your commission to consider. But something that I was emailed about internally from staff about, you know, when, are, are the maps going to be ready so we can make some changes maybe with the MAC boundaries? But certainly something to consider. Those boundaries may change in the future as well. Let's see. So regarding communities of interest, in this alternative, District One includes most of the City of Roseville, with the exception of the existing area of District Four in, in East Roseville. So District One contains most of Roseville, and then there's this section here, and this, this will come up again, that's also part of Eastern Roseville. More recently developed neighborhoods in West Roseville. So that's this area here. That's a configuration that you see continuous or replicated throughout the staff-generated maps. Those move into District Two again, because they are more recently developed. That was the factor that we were considering there. District Three consumes 86% of the City of Rockland. So City of Rockland shown, of course, here, and this is the portion that's not part of District Three, that is part of Rockland, which includes Whitney Ranch and part of Stanford Ranch, I should say, portions of Whitney Ranch and Stanford Ranch.
I'm sorry, I have a question. And, and that's part for the people online, because I don't know what they can see. When you're using the pointer, can the people online see where you're pointing? Because I'm wondering.
I don't believe so. So maybe just, just explain it.
Sure.
Well, can, can someone help with using the cursor on a computer and see, and pointing with a pointer on a mouse when we see her point with a laser? I like you doing that. That helps me.
I can also describe northwestern. I mean, I can use some of those to be more descriptive.
I know we have a lot of people online.
I don't know that we have the technology to follow with the cursor online. So maybe just describe it to the best you can.
Okay. So this northwestern, hopefully my direction, directionality is good tonight. But yeah. But yeah, this northwestern portion of District three, for the purposes of people who can't see where I'm pointing, is home to portions of Whitney Ranch and Sanford Ranch. But this is where there's eighty-six percent of the city of Rockland in this alternative, which also includes the entire town of Loomis, Penrin, and Newcastle. District four continues to include all of Granite Bay. And District five includes the communities of Ofer and Greater North Auburn, west of the North Auburn Census designated place, Sherlin Track, and, of course, all the communities to the east of Highway forty-nine up to Lake Tahoe. In this alternative, all the cities and CDPs are in one district except for the city of Rockland and city of Roseville, which is how the configuration is today. That split of cities is represented today. Let's see. Notable additional factors regarding community plan boundaries. Those are all in one district except Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, which is in Districts three, four, and five. So our next alternative, Alternative B, was developed in response to several comments identifying Rockland as a community of interest and primarily with the consideration for integrity of cities. Again, the deviation on this map same as Alternative A because the largest district, District one, and the smallest district, District five, are in the same configuration, so the deviation is 1.70%. Related to cities, all the cities are in a single district except for Roseville, and all the MACs are in a single district except for Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, and Newcastle, Ofer. Regarding communities of interest, again, District three includes all of the city of Rockland and also includes the town of Loomis, as well as an area of Loomis that is just to the east. So this is bounded by King Road and west of Auburn-Folsom Road. That's included in District three. Penrin and Newcastle are separate from Loomis, but included with the Rural Lincoln communities. Same as in Alternative A, the more recently-developed areas of Roseville or West Roseville, again, shown in this northwestern corner of the city of Roseville, represent newer development and were included as part of District two. And then again, District four includes all of Granite Bay. So I had mentioned, let's see, cities and CDPs are in one district, except for the city of Roseville I had mentioned is in three. You know, this map on the note of compactness, and all of the alternatives that weren't incomplete. So again, I had mentioned the alternative Deanna map was determined to be incomplete, but all of them sort of measured up or in staff's determination were complete. But we made some notes on the matrix also. So this one we noted because District two comes all the way across the I-80 corridor to the northern part of Folsom Lake, may not be considered as compact as the others. For community plans, of course, Horseshoe Bar, Penrin is the one that sort of gets divided. There have been comments about the Loomis Basin and that area remaining as intact as possible, but that area is divided into four districts, four districts in this configuration or in this alternative. So Alternative C was developed with consideration for communities of interest in the lower foothill area, as well as preservation of the North Auburn Census designated place. So just west of Highway forty-nine here is the boundary of the North Auburn Census designated place. That's the boundary that's being followed there. The deviation on this map was 4.0%. It keeps all cities within a single district except for Rockland and Roseville, and all MACs are in a single district except for Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, Newcastle, Ofer, Rural Lincoln, and North Auburn. Regarding communities of interest and neighborhoods, again, Penrin, Newcastle, and Loomis and the Greater North Auburn area are retained in District three. Currently developing areas of Whitney Ranch are also in District three, so I'm going to point here on the screen again. This northwestern portion of the city of Rockland, there are some developing areas in Rockland, part of Whitney Ranch, that are kept in District three, but these more established areas are in District two, along with portions of Sanford Ranch. Again, as with all the other alternatives, this part of West Roseville moves from District one to District two. Granite Bay remains in District four. In this alternative, District five does pick up some areas into District two, which includes Hidden Falls Regional Park as sort of a geographic point. Alternative C-two, this was a map that was requested to be a modification of Alternative C at the request of your commission. I'm not, the characteristics obviously are very similar to Alternative C, so I'm not going to go through those, but I am going to talk about the change area. The change area is, folks, it may be difficult to see for individuals at home or here, but there's a hatched area here that you can see near the northern boundary of District three. A bit closer, look, here shows the changes that were requested. This is also in the staff report. But there's this area right here that's bounded by Baxter Grade. So this was proposed to be in District three but pulled back into District five. And then there's this area here that's bounded by Garden Bar Road, Fowler Road, and Fruitvale Road, all the way down to one ninety-three. This is a canal, I believe, of some sort. But this was what was requested from your commission to go into District five. So that's a minor change. Largely, the other characteristics are the same as Alternative C. So we're going to talk about the public-generated maps. As part of this part of the presentation, Alternative B-two was developed by a member of the public to recognize integrity of cities and various communities of interest. You can see that Rockland is kept whole in this district. As with many of the public-generated maps, this area of District four that comes up along Highway sixty-five is eliminated, and the deviation for this map is 5.0%. All cities are within a single district except for Roseville, which is represented in four in this alternative, and all MACs are in a single district with the exception of Newcastle, Ofer, and Horseshoe Bar, Penrin. Regarding communities of interest, Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association boundaries are followed closely, including neighborhoods, well, neighborhoods to the east of Highway sixty-five. So here's Highway sixty-five, neighborhoods, this is still part of the city of Roseville, but neighborhoods to the east of Highway sixty-five, as well as the west of sixty-five, are in District three, separate from where most of Roseville is in District one, or rather, separate from portions of District one. Highland Reserve and Harding Neighborhoods are split between Districts three and one, so that's right along this boundary right here. Diamond Oaks is completely in District one. Blue Oaks and Pleasant Grove in the northern part of Fittonment Farms, which run right along the northern side, northern part of the city, are in District two. Rockland, as I mentioned, is kept in one district, and District four includes the town of Loomis, Penrin, Newcastle, and Granite Bay. And then the Ofer community in Greater North Auburn are west, and West, Greater North Auburn area west of Highway ninety-five are in District five. I had mentioned, I had mentioned cities already, but cities are all in, sorry, all cities and CDPs are in one district except for the city of Roseville, which is represented in four. And let's see. Regarding additional factors, and the community plan boundaries are all in one district with the exception of Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, that's divided between Districts four and Districts five. Okay. Alternative, excuse me, Alternative D was also developed by a member of the public to recognize integrity of cities, balance communities of interest, in particular, Loomis, Granite Bay, Penrin, and Greater North Auburn. Again, similar to B-two and the other public-generated alternatives, the area of D-four along Highway sixty-five are eliminated. The deviation on this map is 4.05%. All cities are within a single district except for Rockland and Roseville. And then all MACs are in a single district except Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, Newcastle, Ofer, Rural Lincoln, and North Auburn. Regarding communities of interest, again, Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association boundaries are followed closely in a somewhat similar, but slightly different configuration than Map B-two. Blue Oaks, most of Pleasant Grove, as I mentioned, this northern area of Roseville, along with the northern portion of Fittonment Farms are in District two. District four includes Loomis and Granite Bay in this map. It's also different from B-two in that Rockland is grouped with Penrin, Newcastle, and Greater North Auburn. So Loomis located here, Rockland right here on the map, and then it's grouped in with, of course, Penrin, Newcastle, and this Greater North Auburn area. In this configuration, District five also comes across that District two boundary and includes the Hidden Falls Regional Park area. Let's see, related to all cities and CDPs are in a single district except for the city of Rockland and the city of Roseville. So city of Rockland, about ninety percent is in District three. You can see the percent that's not in District three is down here south of I-80. That's remaining in District four. The city of Roseville is in four districts, just represented in Districts one, two, three, and four. You know, one of staff's thoughts here on the compactness test was, you know, while this map is considered to be compact, bypassing Loomis for more distant areas here was something that's noted in the matrix. But so long as it is done, and this is also related to some public comment made in a way that ranks communities of interest higher than compactness, compactness being the fifth ordered criteria, then that is something for your commission to consider. Some additional factors of note in Alternative D, Ofer General Plan and the Auburn Bowman Community Plan are in Districts three and five, so those are split, and the Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, Community Plan is also split. So this next alternative, Alternative P, it was developed also by members of the public to recognize communities of interest in Roseville as well as rural communities of interest. It was drawn based off of census tract data, because it was later modified on block-level data to P-one. But that level data isn't the dataset that's used during, traditionally during the redistricting process. It's census block data that is used. So the deviation on this one, 6.54%. It's, cities that are currently in a single district are divided. Those include Auburn, Lincoln, and Loomis. And then Rockland and Roseville, again, similar to today's map, are also divided, and similar to staff's maps are also divided. MACs that are currently in a single district are also divided. Those include West Placer, Sheridan, Rural Lincoln, and then Horseshoe Bar, Penrin is represented in three districts, Newcastle, Ofer in two districts. But regarding communities of interest, the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association boundaries, again, are followed closely. Historic downtown Roseville remains intact. Highway sixty-five and Highway, I'm sorry, did I move forward by accident? I did. Highway sixty-five and I-80 are used as dividing boundaries in this alternative. So Roseville neighborhoods east of Highway sixty-five are divided from the remainder of Roseville with the exception of a small portion, excuse me, Roseville neighborhoods east of Highway sixty-five, so again, that's the dividing boundary between Districts one and two. All the neighborhoods west of Fittonment Road move from District one to District two, so that was a very clear dividing line for this particular map. District four, of course, you can see, falls really closely along the Highway I-80 corridor all the way into parts of the city of Auburn. And then District five covers most of the northern part of the county and moves into portions of the city of Lincoln. Regarding additional factors, you know, staff did judge this map to present changes, significant changes related to the additional factor number six, and then noted that it divided some existing community plans that aren't divided. So West Placer Dry Creek down here in the southwestern portion of the county was divided. Sunset Area Plan, Sheridan Community Plan, and then, you know, more common with other plans, Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, and to some extent, North Auburn. So from map P-one was derived. And this one, of course, was done based on census blocks, so this more granular dataset was used. It was developed to recognize communities of interest in Roseville as well as rural communities of interest. You can see on the screen, similar to other maps, it eliminates that portion of District four that goes up and into along Highway sixty-five. The deviation on this map is 2.63%. And the cities in this map, similar to, somewhat similar to P, but a little bit different. Cities are in a, are currently in, that are currently in a single district are divided. Those include Auburn, Lincoln, and Loomis. MACs, same thing, that are currently in a single district are divided. West Placer, Rural Lincoln are now divided into two districts in this configuration. But regarding communities of interest, Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association boundaries, again, followed closely. Same as, similar to P, the configuration around Blue Oaks is similar. District four is very similar to Alternative B-two. That, the configuration there is similar. And then D-five, for the most part, follows the, this is Wise Road running east to west right here, so that's what District five is following. So it no longer divides part of the city of Lincoln. It remains out of the city of Lincoln, but follows Wise Road all the way to the west. So regarding some, again, some notable additional factors, again, staff had judged that this was some significant changes to existing districts. And then related to community plan boundaries, again, West Placer Dry Creek were divided into Districts one and two, and the Ofer General Plan and North Auburn Bowman Community Plan into Districts four and five. into districts 4 and 5. This is the final public-generated alternative. I had mentioned, you know, it does recognize keeping Rockland in one district. It recognizes growth areas of West Roseville. It does omit several areas, which you can see shown in gray here, this area around the Horseshoe Bar, Penrin, and kind of greater Lincoln area, omits the Highway 65 area that a lot of public-generated maps address, and then some portions of West Roseville. So we had, you know, identified this as incomplete, as is shown in your alternatives assessment, and then, of course, with an unknown deviation and a lot of missing information, weren't able to, you know, really include it. But it has, of course, been provided here and analyzed per your request nonetheless. That concludes my overview of the alternatives. That's a tremendous amount of information, and I realize you probably have a lot of questions. I am going to pass the presentation over to Jane to discuss a summary of the analysis as well as some additional comment that has been provided, as well as some considerations for your commission.
Thank you, Nikki. And again, thank you for the matrix.
Again, kudos to Nikki and Dennis for a phenomenal amount of work. But for those who want the Reader's Digest version, I have the summary. As noted, certainly in Nikki's remarks and in your alternatives assessment, all of the aforementioned maps achieve contiguity, which is your first priority, and also rely on natural and artificial boundaries. That is your fourth state, federal redistricting criteria priority. But as noted, the alternatives vary and can be distinguished by, as you see in the alternatives assessment, deviation or how close they come to that population parity number of less than 5%, preserving communities of interest, honoring city integrity, and compactness. As noted at our October 14th commission hearing, staff preference remains with map alternative You may recall that we have had quite a few comments at our October 14th meeting, and in addition to what was presented earlier on Slide 10, we've had over 50 comments received since the November 4th materials were posted, at least as of our count this afternoon. And I want to highlight a couple of public comment theme highlights here for your information. Certainly, we heard quite a few requests with regard to Whitney Ranch remaining with the city of Rockland, that rural communities of interest should be kept together. Not so much a public comment, but there was a claim that maps were allegedly drawn based on political consideration. Some of you may have seen the Sunday editorial in the Sacramento Bee, which made that allegation. And what I found interesting was that it really viewed the map results through a political prism versus looking at the underlying census population data on which the maps were based in accordance with state and federal criteria. In addition, the northwest portion of D1 shifted, because that was the change that was called into question, because it's easily transferable but still maintains contiguity and compactness. And you'll recall, District 1 needs to lose 16,000 people for population parity. That northwest corner is where there were 13,000 of those 16,000 people. So it was a way to honor all the other state and federal criteria and yet shift the required population in order to get that population parity where it needed to be. Additionally, that northwest portion of D1 includes new development that is less established communities of interest as compared with the older parts of Roseville. Lastly, there were also concerns expressed over the residences of candidates and incumbents, and the maps in no way took this into account, and there is no justification for communities of interest as per the map criteria. When it comes to process, the recommendation-
I have a question.
Yes. I'm sorry, District 1. Yes, I'm sorry. After all of this, we do resort to shorthand. My apologies.
Okay, thanks.
The staff recommendation, or I'm sorry, the recommendation in terms of next steps in the process to consider the alternatives assessment, to evaluate the merits of each map alternative, eliminate those that are inconsistent with state and federal criteria, focusing on those that optimize compliance with that same criteria, the registering requirements. Direct staff to forward the commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for its review, again, in accordance with state and federal law and consistent with any additional direction provided by this commission. Lastly, a few policy considerations. And the questions that are posed here are really intended as a guide for the path that your deliberations may take. In order, one, which alternatives do not meet the federal and state criteria and should not be considered nor advanced? Which alternatives best represent communities of interest, neighborhoods, census-designated places, city integrity, and compactness? Again, back to that federal and state criteria. What are the notable features that drive your recommended alternative? This will certainly help Clayton in drafting the findings that need to be advanced together with your recommendation to the board. What are the reasons, findings, that support your recommendation? And what other factors would you like the Board of Supervisors to consider as it reviews your recommendation and takes final action before submittal of our redistricting map to the state of California? I will leave the policy considerations up for your review and consideration. And with that, we're certainly happy to answer any questions or however the commission would like to proceed.
All right. I think at this time, commissioners have questions of either Nikki or Jean.
Go ahead, Dave.
Oh, mine's pretty quick, actually. When it comes to B2, alternative B2, I know there's been a mention of 5%, and I'm not sure how significant those figures are with the 5.00. Is that percentage within the total deviation, is that acceptable?
I had clarified that 5% or less was the criteria supported by, you know, case law and local, so that would meet it, 5% or lesses.
All right. Yes, Mr. Collins.
My question is for Clayton and for the staff presenters. Specifically with regard to B2, as Mr. Herzog was mentioning, where are we in violation of Voting Rights Act with the representation of Roseville having four different districts? Four of the five in the county. Currently, there's only two.
I can go ahead and answer that. So one of the five criteria from the state is to, to the extent practical, to respect the geographic integrity of a city or census-designated place in a manner that minimizes its division. Since it was being divided into four components, I guess that meets that criteria in less favor, doesn't meet that criteria as well as others.
Okay, thank you.
Could you say that again, Clayton? I'm sorry, you said it does not meet the criteria?
So it does meet the criteria generally. I would say, on the spectrum of things, it doesn't meet it as well. And I believe in the actual assessment table, it says it partially complies with it. I think that's a reference to that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I do think, so the criteria that you're going to be looking at for the most part of those five criteria in the Elections Code that Nikki went through, those are in priority order. There is some latitude in those, and I think there is some, a bit of a spectrum for each of them. So I just would urge you to consider that as part of your evaluation, that each of those does have a bit of a spectrum to it. And another thing which has already been touched on a couple of times during the presentation but I think is worth noting, is that since the last meeting, there were some comments and discussion about wanting to keep supervisors in certain districts. Comments about that, wanting to keep supervisors in districts or liking a supervisor, those specifically can't be considered as part of the communities of interest. So to the extent that you hear those comments or you may be weighing decisions based on it, that should not be a factor that you're looking at in that community of interest realm. So on that, on those five items, that's just something you want to be aware of as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Nikki at this time? All right, thank you, both Jean and Nikki. So at this time, then, let's open it to public comment. We have typically started public comment in the audience, and then we go to Zoom after that. So is there, oh, do we have a list of EJ?
Yes, Chairman, I have a list of, I think I have seven folks signed up. There may be a couple others. So what I'll do, I'll read three names off the list. You can get in line to the podium, and then afterwards, I'll call the next ones up. So first up, Julia Sweeney, Bill Halliday, Derek Counter.
Should I go ahead? Hi, commissioners, staff, everybody in here and at home. My name is Julia Sweeney. I am a Placer County resident from Roseville, and I really want to share with you my perspective on what's important when evaluating the maps today, and also talk a little bit about what I like specifically about map P1. A little bit about me, I, you know, I was born and raised in Roseville. I'm raising my own family in Roseville now. I got really involved in the districting at the city level, the original districting in Roseville, and learned a lot about the concept of cracking neighborhoods, which is when you split a community of interest in a way that dilutes their power at the ballot box. And so I learned a lot about that, and I decided I wanted to get involved at the city level this time, and I'm excited to be on the Roseville Independent Redistricting Commission now. And so we've gotten some really great training, and I have learned a lot about the priority order. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about how I, as a community member, would appreciate the commission really looking at that priority order. You know, that when they over and over again say, you have to evaluate these in priority order, there is a reason that communities of interest are a higher priority than city boundaries, than the local criteria of not a significant change to the existing map. And that's because communities of interest are what matter most when we're talking about our governance. We're talking about what does my neighborhood need for mental health services, for public health, all of these county services, my neighborhood, my community, that's who I need to come together to hold a supervisor accountable. And so I was really disappointed with maps A through C not having any deviation amongst the drawings for Roseville. And then further than not offering any differences in Roseville, I thought that the current map draw for it was really problematic for our communities of interest. You know, to say we approached the process by saying District 1 needed to lose 16,000 people, so we found them over in the west. That lacks nuance, and it does so in a way that really breaks up communities of interest. You look at the public comments, I can clearly see West Roseville, I mean, we drew in P1, West of Fittiament. As someone from Roseville, that makes sense. There is a distinct characterization of the development, the new experience in West Roseville. Can I have 30 seconds?
If you could wrap up your comments.
Okay, I will wrap up. But then the other problem is with historic Roseville. You know, breaking up Roseville High School neighborhoods from old-town Roseville does so in a way that cracking, which is the official term, and we can ask, I'm sure, staff to talk a bit about how that dilutes power, but when we do that to old Roseville, we make them susceptible to not getting the proper services because no supervisor is totally accountable to that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please, you know, it doesn't have to be decided today. You can take it back to staff and come up with a different map. Don't hate me, but it is a possibility. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will try not to repeat the remarks I gave last month. My name's Bill Halliday. I'm the vice mayor of the city of Rockland. Our city council, former mayors like Peter Hill, George Magnuson, Scott Yule, who served the city as far back as the 80s and 90s, the Chamber of Commerce, and many residents have written to you asking to give Rockland what has been given every other incorporated city in Placer County for decades, to be wholly contained in one supervisory district. The law gives direction here, requiring that the integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest be respected, along with the integrity of cities. Those criteria are given the second and third highest priority. Unfortunately, alternative A does not, I would say, meet those criterias, but your staff said does not optimize compliance or meet as well the other alternatives. Alternative A unnecessarily divides Rockland and divides the Whitney Ranch Homeowners Association neighborhood. The law requires you to minimize the division, and there's a clear option, alternative B and other maps that show you can keep Rockland united in one district. I do want to note that there are developed areas of Whitney Ranch that are in 2 and 3. There has been some discussion that it's only future development in 3. There are developed areas in both. People have been there for several years, the HOA. At the last meeting, it was suggested that adding Penrin and other rural areas might be adding too much to the District 2 area. But alternative A puts an even greater burden on District 2, requiring the supervisor to represent the county's three biggest cities all at once. That's many neighborhoods that require meetings, that's 15 city council members, three city managers. If you want to lessen the load on District 2, you can certainly add more rural area to District 3. There's a possibility to do so and stay within the deviation. And you don't burden one supervisor with the task of representing three cities. The other cities, Lincoln, Auburn, Loomis, and Colfax, that like Rockland, aren't bigger than the population of one district, have not had to fight to remain together. I'd ask, why does Rockland have to fight? Roseville, of course, can't be contained in one district, given that its size is far in excess of the population of one district. So I would, you know, there's a path in front of you to meet the criteria and keep Rockland united. It's a higher criteria than compactness. Compactness is a lower criteria, so I think it's important that you put the higher criteria where they belong and keep Rockland together. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Derek Counter, it's Cheryl Burkema, Jason Wedge, and then I have Jan and Rick Maloney, or Jan? Go ahead.
So good evening, commissioners. My name's Derek Counter. I'm a resident of Rockland, California. I'm on the city school board, so Rockland Unified School District. I can say, from the history within Rockland, looking at the different perspectives and the different maps, I think map B best will work the best for this process. In the city of Rockland, we have one fire department, which has one chief. We have one police department, which has one chief. We have one city council, which has one mayor. We have one school district, which has one superintendent. I think one Rockland in all the maps, which is option B, fits the best. Taking a look at the data and the different alternatives, it has the lowest deviation, that 1.7 number, again, with A, but right there. The number of cities and towns within the district, it's a better mix within alternative B than it is in A. The all cities within a single district, where it has Roseville in parentheses 3, that is the same Roseville 3 within most all of them. So keeping all that, and again, going down to that, the MACs in a single district, it minimizes those. So again, one fire chief, one police chief, one mayor, one superintendent, one Rockland as a whole community, and map B works the best, and it fills out with contiguous neighborhoods and the cities altogether. So again, please keep Rockland whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Cheryl Burkema. I live in Granite Bay. I actually brought up the matrix last time, and I was very pleased to see your commission request that from planning. I have worked as a master-level programmer for HP, Intel, Samsung, eBay, a slew- I have worked as a master level programmer for HP, Intel, Samsung, eBay, a slew of startups. And I can tell you that the matrix that's being used is very helpful. However, it's not complete and it's not being used correctly. So words like "not as compact" is a subjective statement. When you build a matrix, you have weights on those criterion. The federal and state come first, and then come the local. And the weights are applied according to where they fall in that matrix. So there's no guessing your inner out, and the matrix itself will determine your score. You come out with a group of ranked alternatives. You should be able to look at that. There may be ties in some cases, but you should be able to say, based on this matrix, this alternative met the highest criteria, and, and so on, till you get to the bottom. So I am in favor of D. And I think that it's, it's very sad that the proponents of maps, the people that spent time creating the maps, weren't even allowed to present their own maps. So the, the criteria that they're being judged on and the statements that are being made are by someone else. The people that actually put those together and spent the time on them weren't allowed to do that. Sonoma County had an independent commission, which I know you don't have control over, but they also had interactive maps where you can see everyone's maps in an interactive system. I asked for specific plans, maps to be drawn, and I asked for the MAC meeting maps to be drawn. So if you want similar communities of interest, you would look at the MACs and say, oh, yeah, they kind of align here. Those weren't provided. The specific plans in terms of growth, the growth in District 1 and District 2, these plans are already approved. They already have multiple extensions applied. That growth is not maybe allowed, but people may have chosen their communities of interest based upon social and economic factors of not wanting to be included with those specific plans. For example, for one thing, I think it's very sad that we have a huge planning department and we don't have a map that shows all the specific plans in the area. So I, I hope that you'll consider moving the appropriate B2, D, E1, those maps that meet the criteria forward to the, to the Board of Supervisors, and that someone actually does the math and says, A, B, and C wouldn't have even been included in the matrix because those options did not provide. And I know someone, I don't remember, who actually said, the lines for 1 and 4 are the same. So they didn't even provide alternatives for those districts. So I hope you'll, you'll get some actual metric measurements, math, applied behind the matrix, and maybe take another look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I spoke last time at the October 14th. And so first, my name is Jason Wedge, and I prepared a little bit this time for you guys. And at the last meeting, I spoke how important it is to strive for unity in our towns in Placer County. This committee can achieve this by choosing a map that brings towns and communities together under one supervisor, which Map B will accomplish this, exception of Roseville. I don't think that can be accomplished. Another area of division that we have seen as of late is the overreach of authority and tyranny of our government. And we are seeing this down to our local level. And I believe the comment was made about the article in the Sacramento Bee. And I believe it was derived from this right here, which, when I saw it, it was, I can tell you, I was very displeased when I saw it. So if you guys haven't seen it, a recent video surfaced where this type of overreach of authority by Supervisor Holmes. Many have found this to be disturbing and Supervisor Holmes colluded with, to have Map C created to keep him in his current district, which I am in his district. I don't dislike the man, but after seeing the video, it's very clear on that. If any of the Commissioners support Alternative C, they are clearly complicit in the political manipulation of this redistricting process. Supporting Alternative C puts a stain on the reputation of this commission. Alternative D controlled alignment of District 3 duplicates the political manipulation Alternative C and must also be rejected. Additionally, with this very narrow passage north of Loomis, it is also, it also fails in the requirements for the compactness. And I can tell you, many have filed a complaint with the FPPC and other government agencies to investigate this violation. So to end, I'm calling this committee here before me today, who has taken any directions from any of the Board of Supervisors to immediate step down from these appointed positions. You guys are here not to take favors from anybody that appointed you in those seats right there. And I'm sure a lot of the community feels the same. So as you look over these maps, take into consideration of what the community has put before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan or Rick Malali?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard Malali. My wife, Jan, behind me, she signed me up. So here I am. We live in Colfax, Placer County, District 5. We are the largest district out there right now. But, you know, we are so spread out. The map that both my wife and I favor is B2 or B, or B or B2. What we have seen, and I agree with Jason, I watched that video of Supervisor Holmes. And to me, looking up the definition of gerrymandering, that was the perfect case right there. He was requesting the city council in Loomis to basically look at his map and basically kind of put the other maps aside. Hour, one hour and 18, if you care to look at the city council of, I believe it was October 26th, you will see that he makes a presentation during public comment. And what got me the most, I know, you know, you guys are interconnected with other members, like the Board of Supervisors, or the, or even down the other councils down there, that you, you work together, I know that. I've worked with planning commissioners before, especially with Colfax, working with them when they had one. Instead now, it's just a city council. So I'm just saying, my wife and I, B, B.2. And I take really exception to what Supervisor Holmes did at the Loomis City Council Board Meeting. And I had written at all, the Board of Supervisors in Auburn, what my concerns were with that. So hopefully, just because he's trying to save his seat, is just something that I find irremrehensible and his actions irredeemable. And he needs to be either sanctioned or stepped down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last two names on the list, Amber Beckler and Jennifer White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Amber Beckler, I live in Granite Bay. I wanted to, first, I won't go over the details of how I created B2 and D. I think that's very well documented in the information you've received. I'd like to make a couple clarifications based on my perspective and what I've heard. I do want to reinforce that the Voting Rights Act requirement are in priority order. So while Roseville is split in multiple districts in a couple of the maps, it was done so in a way to preserve communities of interest, which is VRA number 2, which is a higher priority. I also wanted to point out that Map B, while it does preserve Rockland, and I can completely understand why Rockland would want that, I don't understand how staff can evaluate that as compact because District 2 comes all the way over basically to the north side of Granite Bay, and it, it splits the county in half. And so I'd like staff to clarify how they deem that as compact. The thing I actually really wanted to highlight today is the conversations I've had with multiple residents in all districts in Placer County in the last couple of weeks. It's been a pretty busy couple of weeks for me. The things I've heard are, what has already been stated, Districts 1 and 4 and all staff map alternatives are the same. So there's actually really no alternatives to evaluate for folks in those districts. I also think that the carve out in West Roseville and the peninsula in District 4 can be eliminated, and that's demonstrated by maps B2, D, and P1. And so it is possible to get rid of those unusual or irregular areas, which is actually against the compactness rule. The other thing I've heard from people is that communities of interest are by far the most important. People have their identity. People share their identity with those in the approximate area. It's about where you go to shop. It's about who you talk to. So keeping those together, I think, is accomplished in a priority way in maps B2 and D. The other thing I would say is what I've heard in Placer County is unique, that it is, still has a rural contingent and the growth areas around Roseville, Rockland. And I think balancing rural and suburban or urban areas is very important. And I do feel that maps B2 and D do that. And so I would encourage you to consider moving both of those maps forward. And if staff can't update maps A, B, or C to fix District 1 and 4, I don't feel like they're reasonable to move forward to the Board of Supervisors. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer. Thank you so much for having us tonight and letting us come up and speak. I live in the Penrin-Newcastle area. And I would really like consideration for maps B2. Loomis, Penrin, Newcastle, both are, we all really share the same kind of type of values. We're, we're on septic. We don't have streetlights. We don't have fire hydrants. We have like very different ways of living in our own home and land. And going into Rockland, I'm not sure Supervisor would be able to balance that and maybe be super aware of what we have going on. Also, keeping the rural areas together and ag areas together, the winery areas together, to help with projects in the future where we're not having to have a bunch of people make lots of decisions by splitting the districts up. It will help things be a little bit smoother. I am in favor of being in alignment with Granite Bay. If you drive down Taylor from, you know, just going from Newcastle area down, when you hit Rockland, it looks very different because it's very different in the way it's built, how it's planned. If you drive through Granite Bay, coming in through Loomis, it's, it's pretty congruent till you hit about Douglas, and then the city hits. And I just would like to point that out. Sorry, I'm not really good at speaking. One, one issue is I do think we need to get rid of Map C. If you have not watched Holmes talk, he's my Board of Supervisor, and I like him very much. And I like that he wants to keep our area together. I agree with that. But it does feel very much like he is abusing his position and doing self-dealing. For my license, if I did something like that, I'd have it pulled in a second and lose my job. So I think he either shouldn't be allowed to vote at the time, or we need to pull Map C altogether. Again, I do think Map B2, even though it's at the highest standard deviation of 5, really keeps Rockland where they want to be, keeps the Lincoln, Roseville, and other areas kind of in their spots. I know we have a terrible problem with Roseville because of the density of the population, but it sounds like that could probably be remedied a little bit with a little more looking at. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
That's, there we go. I was going to say, there's other people in the audience.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to once again speak on this very important issue, which will impact our county for the next 10 years. This decision has critical implications to our communities. And by the way, I think you have what I'm going to say in front of you, so that'll help you. I know that the thought was that this redistricting process would be done ethically and without political influence. But sadly, that has proven to not be the case. Irrefutable evidence of manipulation has come out in recent days, specifically with regards to Alternative C, which is now tainted and must be removed from consideration. These are not my words, the supervisor said it himself. The communities of Rockland, Loomis, Newcastle, Penrin have requested considerations in the, in the redistricting process that are reasonable, logical, and workable. Map B2 is the only alternative that satisfies all their requests. Rockland is clearly justified in being primarily its own district. Loomis, who had a meeting the other night, and I hope you've had a chance to read their letter, makes it very clear what they're after. Loomis wants to align itself with like-minded communities of Penrin, Newcastle, and Granite Bay, who all value their rural roots, which is basically a reconstitution of the Loomis base. And that's really their goal and objective. And again, B2 is the only one that assists them in making that a reality. Roseville has come up, I know it's an issue, I know it's a concern because of having four districts in it. I've looked at it every possible way, trying to figure out a way around it. And it's, if you try to fix that issue with Roseville, you create more issues. And I think the staff even said that somewhere along the way. And I think it's interesting that we've heard from Rockland, we've heard from Loomis, but we've not heard anything from the city council, mayors of Roseville. So, you know, in their absence, it appears they do not have an issue. And I would say we are running out of time. You know, it would be nice to work these longer. I wish it wasn't so compressed into two months. You know, normally would have had March to now to work on this, but we haven't. We've got to get this done. The more we massage it, I think the more we're going to lose our minds. So it's time to get to something reasonable. I see I'm about out of time, but I'll try to get through it quickly. B2 is much more consistent than any of the other alternatives in its approach. It's segmenting communities of like interest. E2 eliminates irregular placement of lines that logically jut out from the core of the district. The flow of the lines in B2 has a very balanced geographical appearance and will function more effectively. Of all of the maps, B2 is best at keeping community plan areas within districts, which, as planning commissioners, I know you can appreciate that.
Can you wrap it up?
I will. I've spent a fair amount of time, as I mentioned earlier, analyzing all the alternatives and have even tried to come up with new approaches. But in the end, there is now no question that B2 is superior in addressing the needs of the communities and the residents of Placer County in the best possible way. I strongly encourage you to reject, reject the compromised alternative of C and C2 and send B2 as your sole recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. EJ, is that it for the audience?
Yeah.
All right. So let's begin the Zoom calls. How many do we have raising their hand? Just 10.
Hi, Lisa, can you unmute?
Yes, thank you. Is there a possibility for me to share my screen?
I think we've tried that technology in the past, and no, there's not, unfortunately.
Okay, so let me, so, so this is Lisa. I live in Roseville. And I give support for map P1 because it keeps our communities of interest together. And that also has easily identifiable borders. The influence of the words used on the staff report definitely came across as biased in favor of the staff map. So I just want to say that. P1 took the most important criteria of communities of interest, which should be the highest priority, without the online map tool available when it was drawn. It did miss a few blocks here and there for keeping. It did miss a few blocks here and there for keeping cities intact, which seemed to be the biggest issue that staff had with that map. If you really need to keep the cities intact, then start with map P one and ask staff to make some adjustments. But please keep our communities of interest as priority one. I sent three alternatives to show you that it could be done yesterday, and they confirmed receipt, said that they would send them to you. Did you see them? They would be map P one A, B, and C.
I believe those are included in the comment packet.
Yes.
Okay, great. So map P one C makes minor adjustments in all areas to make sure that the communities of interest are kept intact, as well as including the cities that they were saying were certain blocks. I mean, in Auburn, Southern Auburn, there was a couple of blocks that was a couple of hundred people in the entire city of Auburn that weren't included by accident. So P one C actually distributes almost the same as map P one, but it puts West Roseville in D one and divides that, has that dividing line of fitment, right? So it gives a less diluted than them taking that small little chunk out, like they did in map A, which was ridiculous. So it puts it in D one, and then part of West Roseville goes in with all of Lincoln in D two. And all of Lincoln is included. We removed the 12 bridges, road, so all of Lincoln is in Lincoln. And East Roseville, Granite Bay, Penrin, and Newcastle are all in District four. Rockland is all in District three, along with Loomis, and all of Auburn is in D five. So those three maps that I sent you show you that you can approach staff and ask them to make the tweaks to the map. This doesn't have to be voted on today. These maps are going to be with us for 10 years, and they can have, you know, serious consequences for our communities and representation. And I'm disappointed and frustrated that the Board of Supervisors get to pick the map in the first place and not an independent commission. There's something very wrong with representatives picking their voters instead of the other way around. And even in Bonnie Gore's email that went out yesterday or today, it said the public should participate so that, you know, we have a say in who represents us.
Could you wrap it up?
This is exactly why we're asking you to go to staff and ask them to make adjustments. They are dead set on their maps. And we have shown you that there are better ways to do it. You just need to direct them to do it and take that initiative.
Your three minutes are up. If you could wrap it up.
So I ask you to please, yes, I ask you to please listen to the public and do what's in the best interest of our communities and go with P one C if you need to make adjustments to P one to make those cities intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mark Wright.
Mark, could you unmute?
Oh, yes. Well, thank you for giving me your phone.
We can hear you.
Okay. First off, I'd like to say I'm in favor of B and B two. That keeps the Auburn area in a more concurrent area instead of having them split out. I also don't want you to consider C or C two because of, or C one, I mean, because Jim Holmes goes in and talks to council members to get them to change and add new maps. These are the maps that he's going to be voting on, so I think it's unethical for him to influence the process on something he's going to vote. So that's what I all have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen.
Karen, you said?
Karen Enghuzen.
Thank you very much. You correctly pronounced it. Good job. I have several comments, one of which is bless his heart, but Larry Severson has been in our face since prior to six o'clock. Can someone ask him to turn off his video? It has been incredibly distracting during all of your presentations.
I'm not sure. Larry is one of the Commissioners, and therefore he's up online, so you could, so the public can see him.
But can you remind him that he is on the public and that we've watched him eat his entire dinner?
Okay.
And I, because of that, I'm going to request that you hold another session where we are not so distracted by that presentation. I recognize that you have the minimum two public comment sessions, but I really think that from the comments that I've received via email and text messaging, this has been incredibly distracting for folks. And so I would really suggest that you have another session where folks can feel that they have the opportunity to share their views without some of those distractions. I recognize that he is a member of the Commission. I researched him on Google. I was raised in town city. I get the town contingent needs, but this has been a really difficult session of presentations having that individual in our face.
All right, thank you.
And also, I really, speaking as a member of the public, the optics of having supervisors attempting to adjust these boundaries to preserve their voting constituencies is really challenging. In the time of the public having real distrust issues as far as government, having elected officials who decide on their own constituents is really challenging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Michelle Davis.
Michelle Davis, unmute, please. Michelle Davis, you can unmute.
Yes, I'm here.
There you go. All right.
I just want to back up what Karen said about Larry. It has been so annoying to have him on the right side of my screen, right next to your presentation. I am glad Karen was brave enough to come on and say what she said. Quite frankly, it is annoying to have to watch someone clean their teeth. So I would appreciate it if you would have another presentation where I didn't have to watch such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next is Michael.
Michael Davis?
Uh, Michael, no.
Just Mike. Michael, if you could go ahead.
My name is Michael Bagley. Yeah, I've, from the Zoom experience, isn't the greatest. I've watched Larry eat his dinner, clean his teeth, and all that stuff. I don't understand. And then the maps are so tiny because of the split screen. So I don't understand why we didn't get a full screen just so we could see the maps a little bit better. And it does seem like this process, I'm concerned about the legitimacy of this process, and it seems like it's being rushed. Oh, the other thing is, I would have, I would have posted a comment about it, but the comments are disabled. That's another big blunder on whoever's managing Zoom sessions. So anyway, I'm very concerned about Jim Holmes. I watched that video where he tried to influence the public and Jerry manter the results. And many people may not be aware of that, but he's been on the board for like 20 years. I believe it's 20 years for him, and Wagon's been on the board for 26 years. Something has to change with the Board of Supervisors. The other thing is, the Board of Supervisors created this commission or this committee, and is that not unethical or what? And then they get to vote and choose their own boundaries. Very unethical. With COVID, I thought our Placer County was on the up and up, but as I've been more involved in Board of Supervisors meeting, I've seen them push things through. I've seen them roll back major F that the people voted on for three different times. And they're also like marketing for Big Pharma with this COVID vaccine. Now they're posting on their Facebook page all the time about the COVID vaccine. Okay, anyway, back on track. It looks to me like B or B two looks like the best option to keep Rockland whole. And I, it seems like there's enough people that are really concerned about the process that I think you should take a little bit longer and don't do what the Board of Supervisors do and try to push something through when the process is clearly not complete. Again, this is going to be for 10 years.
Your three minutes is up. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay, yeah, that's all I had to say. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Michael Garbedian.
Michael, you can, oop, you just muted yourself, so unmute yourself again. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mike Garbedian for Placer County tomorrow, myself, Friends of the North Fork. The districts, well, you have a lot of work ahead of you, more than you can possibly imagine, because you don't have what you need. You don't even have one map that looks at the large area. In fact, none of the proposed maps, except for one, showed the entire area of the county. So you lose that perspective throughout the entire thing to understand that this area with its tremendous square mileage is being balkanized into at least two districts and broken up. Now, I want to, my most important thing to say, I think, are a couple of questions. And the first one is the crying need for an explanation of exactly what the outreach was to the rural areas of the district, to the different rural groups, and their, what did they do? How did they outreach to that public? How did they involve them? We need a detail of that. Now, probably the other key question that you should know, and the public needs to know, is what is the method for challenging the maps that are adopted by the Board of Supervisors? There are timelines. How do people do that? What are the different mechanisms? Are there different mechanisms? Is it only one mechanism? That explanation should have been one of the things included to inform the public fully about this process. Now, there is not one map that you should, not a single map that you should approve and recommend that's been proposed. It's hard to imagine how the county could have failed to even attempt. There's no attempt even made to draw a rural map. All of the maps before you would disenfranchise the rural voters. Disenfranchise. Not just what I said last time. The movement for many years where rural America is being written off the political map. Now, we're talking about not, we're talking about doing the same thing here, as I recommended four years ago to the Board of Supervisors. They needed to create an ag district, but they all wanted to have a piece of the ag district. This thing about having each district balance different communities of interest, what that exactly translates into is never having one of those districts represented on the Board of Supervisors, because there's no effort to make sure that all of those communities of interest, especially the major one that's left out, is recognized with its own potential district. For goodness sake, this is what you need to write. I have worked with maps for many years. I am not a map maker, so I don't have a map in my back pocket for you. But the county demonstrates, that is the bias that the county staff demonstrates, not personally, but in their work, and who they consulted with, and how they didn't understand this basic fundamental need for the rural county and what's going on in it. Those are really my major points. There are, there is so much that needs to be said about this, about the inadequacy of this, and it's up to you, really, to figure out how to correct it, how to make it acceptable. And in terms of both the process and the outcome.
Your three minutes, could you bring your statements to a close?
No, thank, and then I'll just make a final comment. I've never been in, I've been in many, many Zoom meetings, and I've never seen one where people have more than a little picture as opposed to their entire face. I don't mind seeing the blown up screen to yours, the same size, but it seems to me you could, someone could manage that a little better. But maybe this is kind of representative of the need for attention to physical space and maps. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity once again, and all I can say is good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have Barbara Smith.
Barbara Smith, unmute, and you can speak for three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Barbara Smith. I am a resident of Auburn, and I want to thank you for your careful consideration of these maps. And I want you to think very carefully about the message you're receiving from some of the citizens that you've heard this evening. Now, I'm not a demographer, and I appreciate the challenge that the staff had to draw these maps, had an independent commission, been supported by our Board of Supervisors. I think many of us would feel a lot more confident that some of the concerns that we have about how these districts are being drawn might be not existing. For example, when you have a supervisor who feels emboldened enough to go out in public and say, I went to the county council to talk about this map, and you have this map because I was moved out of my district, and now I move back in, and that's how map C came about. How do we know that those conversations didn't take place behind the scenes on maps A and B? How do we know that people with special interests and particular ideas in mind didn't speak on their behalf and just didn't come out in public and say it? I think you should eliminate consideration of maps A, map B, and map C. I think the only thing that is going to let the public believe that you actually have chosen a district or are recommending a district that has the public and fair representation and equity in mind is if you look and choose at one of the districts that are submitted by the citizens who have drawn them. I personally am advocating for P one, and actually, it's alternative, P one C. But I think you should give consideration to the other citizen-drawn maps. They've put a lot of effort into it. They've done, they've looked at that criteria. As it was mentioned earlier, the matrix that's being used isn't being used correctly, but it has been used correctly by those who have drawn those citizen maps. And I strongly ask you to think about that very carefully. Maps A, B, and C are tainted by special interests and partisan issues. And while no map is perfect, I believe that those citizen-drawn maps will provide a better option, and should be, you should choose one of those as the only recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Independence and integrity deserve more than lip service, demonstrates that you've listened to the citizens and make the fairest choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jacob.
Jacob, if you could unmute.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to echo the sentiment that I'm hearing from a lot of folks regarding map C. I think that that map needs to be thrown out entirely, given the origin, how it came about. I also would like to echo what Barbara was saying. I think that the ethics involved in maps A and B are in question as well. Certainly not as much so as C, where we have a supervisor making a direct statement about his ability to get that option created. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tracy Mendosa.
Tracy Mendosa.
Mendonza, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Tracy Mendonza, Roseville resident and city council member for District one out in Roseville. And I just wanted to strongly urge you to reject map B two. I think that having Roseville split, or sorry, four supervisors split over Roseville is just kind of a ridiculous suggestion. I think that it goes against your priorities as well, that we're saying at the beginning of the PowerPoint presentation. I think there's a better way that we can achieve this, and I think that staff alluded to some ideas. And I think that, uh, staff alluded to, uh, some ideas, um, that they had considered uh, in alternative to, uh, uh, Map B two, which wouldn't, uh, place Roseville uh, over four supervisorial districts. So I would encourage you to.
Oops, oops. Tracy, somehow you got cut off?
No, that was me.
Oh, that was you. Okay. We'll, we'll unmute you again and sorry about that.
There you go.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
How far did you get? Or should I just start over?
You don't have to start over. Probably the last, uh, probably 10 words.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to urge you again to, uh, look at the alternatives to, uh, Map B two and, uh, good luck with your, uh, decision. I know it's not an easy one. I'm a former planning commissioner out of Roseville before I was elected. So, um, you've all got, uh, a very challenging, uh, road ahead of you. And I know you'll do the right thing, but I wanted to make sure I weighed in. I think that four supervisory, um, districts, uh, over, uh, a city like Roseville is just, uh, that's just a little excessive. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Francine Yor.
Francine, you can unmute, then you have three minutes.
Uh, this is Ken Yor, uh, it's on Francine's account, but.
Okay.
Hey, uh, I'm past mayor of Rockland, uh, been in Rockland since we had 3,500 people, uh, 45 years. And I would like to see Rockland kept in a single district. We've been divided as long as I can remember. So I think it's time for us to be represented totally by one supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Patterson.
Joe Patterson, uh, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name's Joe Patterson. I'm a city council member in, uh, Rockland, California. I got an audience here in my house, uh, listening to me, so, uh, excuse me, they're distracting. Um, just wanted to, uh, first of all, thank you for your time and, and effort in this. I know it's very, uh, controversial and a lot of hard decisions to make. Uh, you know, I'm watching it on the state level. Um, it's, it's just, uh, really amazing. And a, a lot of interest goes here. Um, you know, as a city council member myself, you know, I'm always very interested in seeing how, um, how county supervisors look at cities. Because while, uh, counties are, um, you know, supervisors do a lot of items countywide, uh, sometimes it's important that supervisors remember that they also, uh, represent people within the cities themselves. And so, um, so for things like the ARPA funding and, and all those, uh, um, things that come from the federal government and grants, you know, there are also constituents in cities uh, that, um, only can be really presented, uh, with a fair balance here to the extent that cities are kept together. Um, and so I, I believe that alternative Map B, um, for example, ensures that, uh, all the cities are kept together with the exception of Roseville, and that's only because of its, its size and, um, just its sheer, uh, you know, just how big it is. But, so I'm, I'm rooting for, uh, alternative Map B. I do think there are some other alternatives that I, I just want to point out to the extent that Northwest Rockland is, uh, separated in some of those maps, like Alternative A, for example. And I did email the commission about this. Um, it splits Whitney Ranch in the middle, which, uh, the HOA itself is a pretty, uh, you know, obviously a community of interest. I think it'd be awkward to split a, a community like that. Um, but then again, if you take off the entire Whitney Ranch HOA and you put it in the district that's, uh, connected with Lincoln, for, like it is now, for example, um, then the, then you have the vast majority of Rockland, um, separated from the largest growing area in Rockland, and that would be, uh, the Northwest Rockland area. So, uh, so I'm a big fan of B. I think there are ways you, you might be able to make other maps work, but I think it's really imperative to keep at least the HOA together. Uh, Map B does it best, keeps all the cities together. Um, and I think that that's going to be really important, especially as, uh, cities are growing all throughout Placer County. And, you know, the people within cities also too want to ensure that they have representation on the Board of Supervisors as well. So, thank you very much for your time and, uh, good luck. And, uh, I, uh, value your time that you're putting on yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Patty Nefer.
Patty Nefer, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Patty Nefer. I am a Penrin resident, longtime Penrin resident. And I'm just very glad to hear that, um, there are so many rural residents who really don't get this involved in the politics. Finding the courage to come to the commission meetings and speak and finding the courage to send in, um, comments. And we're such a small population when you compare the unincorporated rural residences to, you know, the entire city of, of Roseville coming to speak or the entire city of Rockland coming to speak. Um, I, I want to encourage, um, the commissioners to really take to heart how important the rural community lifestyle is. And one of the, the, the previous speakers said, you know, no streetlights and you're on septic and you're in the same school district as well. And one thing that I didn't hear, um, during the presentation is one of the commissioners did ask to have the school district, the Loomis, um, unified school district boundaries looked at because that is the core of a lot of that rural area. The Penrin, um, uh, Loomis, you know, over Newcastle area is the school district. And, um, comparing those areas and taking them and kind of dissecting them and putting them into the larger districts and splitting them up on one of the maps, even into four, actually three different supervisory districts, just doesn't make a lot of sense. It, it takes the integrity away of the rural communities. And the supervisor represents the unincorporated areas as well. And that is the only representation. We don't have a mayor. We don't have a city council. So having a supervisor be the representative of, uh, unincorporated rural area that doesn't have cityhood is very, very important. And having, assigning three different supervisors to one small, um, population area that is succinct area is just not a good idea. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
And I know that Jane wanted to comment.
Did we not already hear from Jane?
She commented during, uh, Morgan, when she wanted to comment on that.
Say that now again?
She signed up for the wrong item.
Okay, all right.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Uh, as you know, my name's Jane Nagri. I live in Granite Bay and I did attend the October 14th redistricting workshop. And at that meeting, there was, uh, so much in-depth discussion about possible changes to improve Maps A, B, C, and C two. And many remarks were made by the redistricting committee during the discussion and also by the public. So I was very surprised that when those maps came out, they weren't updated to include any of these comments. And one being the conformance to the compactness rule under the Voting Rights Act. I, I would like to recommend Maps D and B two go to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. I, I don't think we should send just one map. I think we should send two or three because otherwise they're not really having any input of their own. I, I think that, uh, Map D is, seems superior as the district boundaries have regional focus and they represent a mix of rural and suburban along the planned growth areas that will come in the next 10 years. I, I think that, uh, both D and B two of line with the voting rights requirements. They have a focus on communities of interest and they balance the rural and, uh, suburban areas. And they meet the 5% of the population criteria. So I would ask that you would consider those and maybe another alternative. And I, I do, um, feel for Larry tonight. It's, I'm sorry that someone else did not realize or wasn't able to tell him that he was on display for the world. And I just think that was, uh, a very sad thing from the point of view of the commission, that someone or someone else attending the meeting, someone did not catch that. And I thank you for this time and I look forward to the next meeting. I hope there's a next meeting.
Thank you.
Next is Susan Gatawski.
Susan, could you unmute yourself? You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Susan Gatawski. I live in Roseville. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, I've had a chance to review all of the maps, both the staff-generated maps and the public-generated maps. And I'd like to speak in support of Map P one, um, for a couple of reasons. I think it sticks most strictly to the intent to, uh, keep both communities of interest and, um, commuting corridors. It seems to flow more naturally around both community and, um, city guidelines. And most importantly, I like the idea that a bunch of citizens got together and said, hey, this is what we think serves our community best. And again, I think that they've made a couple tweaks to it to make it, uh, more receptive to some concerns. And again, I think that P one is the one that should be moved forward to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more raised hands.
No more. Okay. Uh, if there are no more, um.
Oh.
Whoop, there is.
Oh, and then he went away.
Is there someone else popping up?
No. Couple of hands popping up and going down. Might want to give it just another sec. Yeah, here we go.
Uh, we're, we're making sure there's no one else on Zoom right now, so.
I believe Sandra Harris wants to comment.
Sandra Harris wants to comment? Okay. Sandra, unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Thank you. You saw me flashing there. Uh, I've been following this and it is very hard to see the maps and I've been trying to read up on them. But, uh, I live, if you drive through Granite Bay, you might not think it's rural, but I live in a very rural area. We're on septic tanks, no streetlights, all that. And I would like to see either B two or D, uh, be aligned with Loomis, Penrin, Newcastle, um, that area. I think we have a lot in common and at one time that was our district, um, Granite Bay and Loomis. So, um, that would be what I would support. And I appreciate all the work that goes into it. And I know you're under a deadline, that it wasn't your fault, that, uh, census figures didn't come back till a lot later than they should have. And, um, it, it does seem rushed, but there's no way out of it. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, um, sorry, some people are having some difficulties here.
Okay, hold on here. We're still, looks like there's some more who want to speak.
Here we go. Uh, Miguel.
Miguel, unmute yourself.
Hey, I, I must be lucky. Every time I do Zoom, they mute me and unmute me. But anyway, my name's Miguel Yukovich. I've been a 60-year resident of Placer County for the last 40 years in, um, the town of Loomis and served, uh, 20 years. Hey, my first question is, who's running the Zoom? We've got this double screen with Larry's face there for the last, I don't know, two hours. I don't know who's running Zoom, but I know when we, you guys do it in Loomis, you can split from double screen to single screen. So who's running the Zoom? First question. No answer. Okay.
The answer is the IT department here, so, uh, I think they've been listening and, uh, we'll try to resolve that in the future.
Okay. Secondly, um, I would support B two, I believe it's B two. Because for, forever, Loomis Basin is consisted of Loomis, over Newcastle, and East Granite Bay. And that would be just logical. And if you want to, if you need to find a few more people, you could bring, go upstairs of college and bring in the new develop up there on the hill. Well, for all of a sudden, I forgot its name. But all these people, and you know, working on a community plan, all these people think they're in Loomis. Even the people in Penrin and, and, um, Newcastle, even though they realize they're not in Loomis, all feel like they're part of our family, especially going east out to Granite Bay. Um, long time they've had, before they had a Loomis post office box. But we all consider ourselves part of the family of Loomis. And to split this up and redistricting would be a big mistake. So I think that most of the people in this whole area would want to maintain that group of communities. And lastly, I'd like to state that, um, I felt the Board of Supervisors did an injustice to the people of Placer County. This, while you people are on this committee, it was supposed to be made up of citizens. You're not, uh, you are citizens, but you're politically appointed people. You're on the planning commission. You were appointed by a Board of Supervisors member. This was not the intent of the redistricting commission. It should have been people that, that were not appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So that being said, I want to thank you and, um, thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Are there others wanting to speak?
That appears to be all.
That appears to be all. All right. With that, uh, we're two hours into this meeting. Uh, public comment period is closed. I'd like the commission to take a 10-minute break and then we'll come back and open it up for discussion of the commission. So, 10-minute break. I'd like to call to order the Placer County Planning Commission. And at this point in time, public comments are closed and we're bringing it back to the commission for discussion. So commissioners, Nathan, I think you had something you want to say.
Well, I.
Just a minute. I see Clayton. Are you wanting to speak?
Yeah. So we've given this some thought about how to attack this. Obviously, you've got a, a big task ahead of you. I guess I have a suggestion as for maybe, I guess, how to handle this in terms of a framework. There are some policy considerations up there in front of you. One of those is which alternatives do not meet the federal and state criteria? And so I guess when I envisioned your votes and motions and how those may play out, it might be that that would be one thing you would consider in terms of a motion, is if there are alternatives that you believe don't meet the federal and state criteria and shouldn't be advanced. In addition, I believe that the board is expecting a recommendation from you. So that might also be something to consider in terms of a motion. I would expect, or I think one way to handle this is that all of the maps would go forward to the board for purposes of analysis. But unless you have specifically said that you don't believe that these should be warranting further consideration, or that they don't meet the federal and state criteria, and I view that as something you would probably want to do by motion, just to have the consensus on. But then all of the other ones would go forward and then perhaps you choose a single alternative as a recommendation that would go with that. So that might be a framework to start with, but there is a lot of discretion provided you. The board's direction was to get a recommendation from you. So as long as you're operating under that framework, you do have some discretion to figure out how you want to fashion that. I do think with whatever recommendation goes forward to the board, the board would certainly appreciate and it would be valuable for my purposes, for findings, to provide input on the basis for that, along the lines of the, the questions that are raised here and the considerations. And that can be on a, an independent commissioner basis. I don't, I think that might be too cumbersome to do through a vote basis. But if you could just provide some reasoning for your choices or your selections, that would, that would certainly help for, for me and for staff in terms of putting forward that information to the board when this goes forward.
All right. Thank you. So Nathan, did you?
Well, in, in terms of number one, I mean, there, there's, you know, a pretty obvious statement that's been made by the public about a certain situation. And, you know, I'd like for maybe, you know, council to respond to that. I think, you know, in terms of map C and all the versions of that, I think the public deserves a response to some of the accusations that have been made here. And I'm not sure, in response to number one, it may help us in that first question, too.
Sure. Yeah. So a couple of things there. First, when it comes to alternative C, I believe you're, you're referencing the comments made at the, at the Loomis Town Council meeting. And I can speak that on the part of county council's office and that I've been the lead from county's council's office through this process, through the process of creating the map alternatives. And I've been the one that's been involved in staff discussion and creation of those alternatives. And I can tell you, I did not have any discussions with Supervisor Holmes or any of his staff leading up to those selection of alternatives. I also was not asked by anyone within the county or my office to prioritize alternative C over others. But during the, the draft process, I, I have done my best to shield any outside influences during this process. And I, if a supervisor had specifically asked me to push forward a certain alternative, I would not have done so. But that being said, I did review alternative C. I do believe it is legally compliant and that it meets the state and federal criteria. And that's something that ultimately your commission is going to have to evaluate as to whether it meets the state and federal criteria. As I've mentioned before, and as staff has mentioned, the, the location of a supervisor is not a criteria that you can look at. But if you evaluate it under the other criteria and you think that it's a just alternative, then it certainly can go forward. And as you noted in the alternatives analysis from staff, that evaluation has been performed by staff and it indicates that alternative C is a permissible one to move forward. It's just depending on what criteria you look at. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I think that's very helpful for myself and the public to hear you share those specifics. So thank you. I mean, I have other comments, you know, just thinking about, I, I do completely agree that the matrix was very helpful. And I think, I thank, you know, staff for completing this matrix. I have my own scoring mechanism to go over the priorities and understand which maps meet those. Before I list those, you know, I think I, I do wish, and I'm doing my best to understand all the issues in the county and not just District 2. But I am looking at it from a lens of District 2, where I represent. And I wish that Roseville did have more options. And so looking at a combination of the maps from all the alternatives, I think we have a selection here to, to choose from. So I think the highest ones, shall, shall I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Share? Okay.
I mean, we're all going to have our shots.
Okay. I don't know where this is going to go. But before I share which ones I think meet the most, I also want to mention that we're missing two of our colleagues. And if next week, you know, they could be here to share, I think we might need to give them that opportunity. So alternative A, B, B2, P1, and P1C are my top maps.
Okay. All right. Others who want to speak?
You have to jump into the breach here.
Well, actually, I, yeah, he jumped in before you did.
That's okay.
Okay, so Sam, go ahead.
I'll do deference to my colleagues. I appreciate everyone's opportunity to spend this exact amount of time to be here and participate in this process. It's not an easy process, for sure. But there's no perfect solution in any of these, I don't see. I, certainly I represent District 1, but I represent the whole county in the planning commission. So I don't really like seeing Roseville split into four different districts. I mean, we've been historically used to having just District 1 and 4. But I can also recognize the other cities and how they are split and have been split in the past. So I outrule District, or alternative C immediately, for all the many foregoing reasons that have been stated herein. I like alternative B and I like, and I would be willing to find some sort of compromise between alternative B and alternative B2. But again, on the record, I don't like four supervisors representing the city of Roseville. That concludes my, I could go on for a lot longer, but that concludes my comments at this late hour. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Rich?
Okay, I might be jumping into the breach here.
Jump into the breach?
Yeah, because I, I think a lot of the discussion tonight's been very intimidating, basically, when they're talking about an individual. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the various alternatives and what they might offer. And so I guess that makes me a little nervous right now because what I might say now might make some people not.
Okay.
But at any rate, one of the questions I have is, when you look at Placer County now, and you look at the amount of land in Placer County that's unincorporated, and one of the key roles of the Board of Supervisors is to address the issues in the unincorporated districts. And one of the differences that you have when you have a city is you have five city councilmen. And you've mentioned all the individual people that work there. You have, you have public works. You have public safety. You have land use controls. And so basically, there's a lot that a city really has that the rural areas have to depend on the county totally for. And so, you know, that brings a question into my mind where you have a city that becomes its own district, whether that supervisor is really going to be accountable to a significant portion of the county. And so to me, it seemed like there should be at least a, a voting presence in every district from the unincorporated areas. And so that's one of the things I look at. So I guess I don't look very favorably at alternative B or B2. Now, unfortunately, well, alternative A, you know, is, is the county-supported one. I don't prefer it myself, but maybe it's better than some of the others. But alternative C to me has got some real pluses to it. One, it takes into account much of the area that is currently in District 3, including parts of Rockland. But also it includes, what mostly alternatives eliminate is when you look at the communities of Ofer and Newcastle, the Bald Hill area, the, the area around, let me just, Millertown and the valley that's just to the west of the, the commercial park of North Auburn, that is very rural. And so at any rate, I can see where alternative C really picks up those areas. And also, if you look at alternative C, it does kind of split the foothill zone between two supervisors and makes, and puts the valley into Zone 2, I mean, District 2. And so, you know, I'm a little bit frustrated because I see some merit in alternative C. I also see merit in alternative D. And numerous people have explained to me that the town of Loomis very much has been connected with Granite Bay through history. And so, you know, that's what alternative D does. So I guess those are kind of what I'm looking at. And I'm sorry that I'm not really in sync with the rest of the commission here or with the public, a lot of the public that we heard. But I think a lot of the discussion that came out was really from one side. And it was a little intimidating, probably because of the unfortunate appearance that one of our supervisors made in the town of. of the unfortunate appearance that one of our supervisors made in the town of Loomis. But at any rate, I don't care about that because, and I really don't care where he lives. You know, I'm looking at it more from the context of what you're talking, communities of interest. And to, to not connect the Ofer and Bald Hill areas and the Millertown areas with Penrin, where they've traditionally been, you know, I think that's something that should be considered.
Okay. Larry, do you have comments? Larry, you're muted. You're still muted. Yeah, you're still muted. Still muted, Larry. I think you can hold your spacebar down while you're talking and that should unmute you. From our end, is he unmuted? Does, does he have access?
You can really hear him.
Yeah. Larry, how about the, move your cursor to the bottom of the screen and, and hit that little microphone because you're still muted. Possibly so.
Mr. Chair, I was going to make a, make a suggestion. Perhaps in the, in the interim, in the lateness of the hour, you could have, you could direct the staff and, or the IT folks to call him on the phone and correct the problem. In the meantime, you can speak with your positions.
I will speak. How's that? Larry, we're going to have IT, I think Jeremy, give you a call and see if we can resolve that. So, kind of my position, and, and first of all, I want to disclose that part of my knowledge comes from that I'm under contract with the city of Loomis to help update their general plan. And I've just spent the summer spending 10 hours a week going through committee meetings. And one of the things I heard was this commonality of the Granite Bay, the Ofer, the Newcastle, and I think somebody in one of the meetings mentioned Taylor Road, that linkage, which is a very strong linkage of those communities. So, and Rockland is different, you know, Pacific Street is not Taylor Road. I go back, my, I have family who moved to Rockland 48 years ago, kind of watched it from when we went to visit. You know, we had to bring our own food and water because there was no place, nowhere close to, to buy anything when you came to the visit Rockland. And so, I've watched that grow and I've watched that family focus towards the, the Roseville area and the Stanford Ranch area. And so, you know, I do feel bringing and keeping the communities of Granite Bay, Loomis, Newcastle, the Taylor Road area together, I think is important in the redistricting. In the Tahoe Basin, you know, and District Five, which I live within, I think that alternative A and B that brings it down to 193 is how I work and live within the community of Auburn. So that makes a whole lot of sense to me. I have been listening. I think the P1C is dealing more with the city of Roseville and how it's divided. So I think we need to focus on that. So, I would like to see that we don't have four districts represented for Roseville. I'd like to see three. I do think that Rockland should stand alone. I think that is a unique community. And I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I think either if it's District Three or Four, whichever reaches Loomis and Granite Bay and the Ofer area, the, the Newcastle area, is appropriate. So, I, I kind of look at alternative B, B2, and I think it's P1C that seem to have a good starting place, you know, for looking at redistricting. And I also heard the comments from the Tahoe Basin, they like their own district. But I think we all know they don't want 81,000 people east of the crest in order to have their own district. So, those are my thoughts. So Larry, I don't know, they've been able to work with you? Larry, can you unmute yourself and we're ready? You know if Jeremy got ahold of him?
I think we're still working on it.
Yep. He's still working on it. Okay.
Chair, if we're at a point that we're waiting on Commissioner Severson, it might be worth a five-minute break so we can get this.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break and we'll come back at, let's see, that would be, say, 8:45? Is that right? We're about 8:40 right now. So 8:45 we'll come back and hopefully be resolved.
So you can continue it to, yes, you can certainly continue it. The requirements are in the Elections Code for Redistricting that we have to have it, any meeting identified five days in advance.
Okay.
On the internet. So that's the timeline for it.
All right.
Which basically means if we move it to the 10th, staff really won't have any time to do any kind of, I guess substantive work on anything outside of setting the date and returning.
Correct.
And, and the, there were some public comments about postponing this and having further time to discuss it. That November 30th date to the board is a, is a hard date that has to be met.
Correct.
Because if that date isn't met, then we don't make the December 15th date, which means then ultimately the, this redistricting process would be turned over to the courts.
Okay.
So that's the requirement for those dates. And then if you backtrack from the 30th, you have to post that five days in advance, and staff would have to prepare it. So you just, that's the window you're working under if you're evaluating things.
Then the question is, if tonight we were to give staff direction to tweak one or more of these maps into a map that we would like to recommend, can that be accomplished? Realizing we won't have a staff report, the presentation will be on the 10th, and we're going to have to take that information on the 10th. But, you know, I, I kind of think that's where we may want to go. And we can check with the rest of the commission.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I offer a question? And County Counsel, does one extra day, I mean, would it be possible to meet on the 11th instead of the 10th? And that gives a little additional buffer of time?
We would like to do that. The 11th is a holiday, which has created this issue. The 11th is a Thursday, but yeah, it is a holiday. And the concern with a holiday or even the day after the holiday was that we wouldn't, would then be inconveniencing the public and would want to provide it on dates that many people could attend.
That was my next suggestion, was the Friday, daytime or afternoon, late afternoon, like this one.
But if we make a recommendation tonight to go to the staff and have Chris and Nikki modify a map to come say this is a map we'd like, I, I realize they can't do that and get us a staff report by tomorrow. But is it a problem that we would have the presentation then on the evening of the 10th?
So you still have the presentation, you just can't present that map?
Oh, we can't.
Because that's the requirement on the redistricting is that any maps have to be.
Okay.
So the way you would do it, I guess if you wanted to modify a map, you would have to provide clear direction to staff so that we could, staff could prepare a modified map and take it forward to the board on the 30th.
Right, right. I see.
You could still have the 10th meeting, we just, it wouldn't be for discussion of an, of a modified map.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and I would stress that it has to be extremely clear direction because staff would then not be able to return to make sure that that modification is correct. So we would, we would need to know clearly where the boundaries are. And there wouldn't be any room for, I guess, determination by staff to edit things. Because we'd want to make sure we were taking forward whatever your recommendation was.
You don't make it easy, do you?
Okay. Well, blame it on the late census data. This is, this is a very unique process and a very, very shortened window that we have to operate in.
You know, the next steps in the process for the public's information, once this is presented at the Board of Supervisors, how much, again, will they have an opportunity to suggest changes to the maps and then have another presentation for public to speak into that? Will they have more than one opportunity?
So the, the way it is set up right now is they would be making a decision, they would be introducing the ordinance and waiving oral reading of it on November 30th and bringing it back for adoption on December 7th. That's the way it's set up right now. There is a fallback that they could then postpone that to the November 7th to make that introduction and waive oral reading with adoption on the 14th. But that is a, that is, I guess, the last, that has to be done at that time. So, it's right now, it's set up for November 30th. And November 30th would be when the board would need to make that decision as it's set up right now. I, I believe the elections official has, has indicated that postponing any further on that date also has effects with respect to some of the election deadlines.
So Chairman, I mean, I, I, I think, I, I recommend the five maps that are pretty different with my priorities that they give, I think, the Board of Supervisors a lot of options where they could modify these maps and, and look at them. But, and I know they aligned with, with many of, most of you as well. But I think I, I would like to hear from my colleagues. but I think I would like to hear from my colleagues that aren't here and even giving them an opportunity to share their thoughts, even briefly, I think would be helpful for the public.
All right. Other commissioners, your thoughts?
Just, just if I could, sorry Chair, insert real quickly. If it is moved to the 10th, I believe Commissioner Woodward is not confirmed for that day, but Commissioner Di Mattei is, so he would be picking up one more commissioner.
So we never got Mr. Woodward's confirmation then?
Last I heard, he was going to try and make it, but we didn't have confirmation.
I didn't hear that one, was it? Dan may not be here. He's going to try and make it. I guess we'll try, again, real quickly, Larry, are you able to speak with us?
Yeah, he's still on mute and we're trying to get a hold of him.
We still don't have that.
Yep, unfortunately.
This really doesn't give us a lot of flexibility, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, I make a suggestion to the staff if they have not already considered this, just a simple reboot for him so that we can start and try it over. That's happened to me before. I got kicked off several times.
I've been long out, long.
I have one more idea, so.
Okay, what's your idea?
I think, one thing I think we can talk about is, I don't think anyone mentioned P or alternative Dina.
Correct. Alternative what now? Dina?
Dina.
Dina.
And I think, you know, they're looking for some direction here. And I think if you guys are comfortable, taking a look at those two and thinking that maybe they don't fall within number one there, we can give direction for maybe staff not to consider those, those two at least.
Well, I heard P1C is a little more refined than P1, so I'd almost throw P1 in there also. And that's narrow this down. And the other thing is, I'm wondering, do we eliminate alternative C but leave C2? Because Anthony did request for that modification, though I'm not sure why we had want two Cs. So I'm almost thinking that we carry.
Are you talking about 2C or C?
C2. Eliminate C but keep C2. Because Anthony made that modification. I don't, I don't know if you have to have both of those. It's one or the other.
It's a minor modification.
It is a minor modification, yeah.
And it really just conforms with the existing boundary.
Correct. So again, kind of narrowing down what we would continue to consider. So it sounds like then we continue to consider A, B, C2, B2, and P1C5. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Just a minute, you're talking about P12?
Let's see, A, B, C2, P1C, and B2. And there's just slight differences in some of those.
Chair, if I might also include just one comment with respect to P1C. That alternative came in yesterday afternoon.
Oh, it did, okay.
Staff has not had an opportunity to evaluate it for purposes of deviation.
Yeah, we understand, we understand they wouldn't be able to go through the spreadsheet, but leave it as is and keep it as an option for the supervisors. I think, I think, shall I?
Shall I? You know, I'd like to get it narrowed down further than that, but for right now and maybe until the 10th? Yes, let's at least narrow this down for our consideration.
Well Chairman, I think with the discussion and as an option at this point, we'll see how the vote goes.
Okay.
But I'll make a motion.
If I, if I could, apologies for.
Yeah, that's okay.
I believe Larry is ready now.
Oh, okay.
No, good, good. Sorry about that, Commissioner.
Okay. Larry, you on?
Commissioner Severson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right, can everybody?
Go ahead.
All right. Your thoughts about the various options?
I'm not hearing this very well.
We can hear you just really well.
Okay.
So if you could share with us your thoughts about which of the maps and direction you would like to see taken?
So Larry, if you can share your thoughts on the maps and direction you would like to go?
Well, I was sort of leaning at one time towards, I guess it's B or C and I wasn't able to fathom very well the maps that, the other maps that were brought in by the outsiders. I can understand why there's some concerns by the city of Roseville and Loomis, Rockland and all them. And I, and I guess they have their reasons for each of them for wanting it. And I just don't have it fixed in my mind completely exactly how, how to go. Is, there's not a motion before the board, the commission right now, is there?
Nope, we're about ready to make one, but not yet. And just so you know Larry, what we're looking at.
I guess I tend to lean towards maybe alternative B, I don't know.
Yeah, Larry, right now, the motion that we've been talking about making is to continue this meeting to the 10th when Anthony will be here and hopefully Dan. And that we are going to.
I couldn't hear very well what was said.
All right, let me just hang on Larry, one moment. Yeah, let's try this.
Okay, on your phone. Okay, can you hear me Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Nathan was just about ready to make a motion that would, one, we would continue this meeting till the 10th so that we could have Mr. Woodward and Mr. Di Mattei here to make the decision. And two, as we move forward to the 10th, that we would carry forward alternative A, B, C2, B2, and P1C for the Planning Commission, or for the redistricting commission's consideration on the 10th. And then on the 10th, we would make a recommendation to the board from there.
I think that's fine.
All right.
I think that's great, yeah.
So Nathan, did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I think I'll do two separate things. And I think I'll start with direction for staff that maybe, I'd like to make a motion that we continue with these maps, with discussion and consideration for, for the Board of Supervisors. And those that aren't mentioned will not move forward. And so with that, maps, alternative A, alternative B, alternative B2, alternative C2, and alternative P1C would continue in consideration and move forward to the Board of Supervisors.
To the board?
Board, okay.
Or to the Planning Commission on the 10th?
Okay, yeah, I get that.
Continue in discussion in our meetings.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With Commissioner Herzog?
Yeah.
You're intentionally saying you want to keep C?
As, in our discussion, I'm not, it's not my recommendation, but after listening to our discussion, I'm willing to include it if it means we'll eliminate the ones that weren't mentioned at this point. With continued discussion, with an opportunity to have further discussion and further refine the list, if we continue the meeting.
Okay.
So at this point, to, for the first narrowing down of the lists, I think that's a first step.
So I'm wondering, should we make a motion first to continue this meeting to the 10th? So that we know we're meeting? And then the motion could be that the commission will consider those alternatives on the 10th?
If you continue the meeting, then it's done. So I'd like to first narrow down the list and then continue the meeting.
Okay.
See, I was wondering if we should continue, I mean, include alternative B?
So I do believe you can make a motion, continue it, and continue to make other motions.
You can.
It doesn't necessarily end this meeting.
Right.
If that's the commission's desire.
I think it's probably good to know that we want to go on to the 10th.
Okay, well, I'll start, I'll revise my motion. And we'll, my first motion is to continue this meeting to the 10th.
All right. Do we have a second?
Mr. Cannon?
We have a first and a second to continue this redistricting commission to the November 10th. And time certain, would that be what time?
I think that's at the discretion of your commission.
Do you want to do that at 6 o'clock again, 6:05 again, or earlier?
We had, we had 6 o'clock. We had discussed the 6 o'clock start.
Okay, so why don't you put that into the, so the motion includes time cert?
All right, let's try this again. I'd like to move that we continue this meeting to November 10th, starting at 6 o'clock.
All right, and we.
Commissioner Cannon, second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Herzog and a second from Mr. Cannon. We'll go to vote. Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to, was that done?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to further move that after discussion and consideration that we narrow our list of maps and give staff direction during the meeting that will continue to discuss alternative A, alternative B, alternative B2, alternative C2, and alternative P1C.
Okay, do we have a second?
I ask a question if we should include alternative D?
I think, in my opinion, C2 and D are pretty similar. I think, I don't, I think we want to make a recommendation between one of those. Do you have a preference?
I have a real issue with either alternative C or C2. So given the preponderance of those that spoke on behalf today, whether in the audience or telephonically or Zoom, I think that we have a commanding side in one favor and that is to eliminate C.
C2? Both Cs.
You're going to get a no vote from me if that's the case.
Would D replace the Cs?
Let's go with C2.
Okay.
Okay.
I.
So you have, that's your motion then, right?
I just want to respond to Commissioner Cannon's comments and I understand his concern. I think the first narrowing of the list out of respect for the comments and discussion, I'd like to keep my motion as is and let's see where it goes.
And to add to that, Mr. Di Mattei specifically requested the changes for C and probably be good to let him be here to have that discussion.
Fine with that, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
A first from Mr. Herzog and a second from Mr. Cannon. Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
So with that, this meeting then is pushed back to the 10th at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I just would check to see if there's any other motions or directions that you would like to provide staff.
Boy, before the, you know, one of the things with, with P1, anyway, the newest P1s, I guess, P1C, was that it defined Roseville in a way that probably was a bit more contiguous for that population. And I'm, if you could take a look at that and, and see if that can work with any of these alternatives is one direction. And then I think the other, we have a couple of alternatives that keep the Loomis to Newcastle-Taylor Road area consistent. So I think we have that covered. We think we have a couple of alternatives with Rockland as a whole. So I think that does provide us a variety of things to discuss on the 10th. But if you could take a look at those and advise us if there's anything that's out of whack with any of those, I would really appreciate it. So Nikki or Chris, do you have any thoughts on, can you accomplish this before the 10th? And any, any concerns or direction that we could give you that would help you?
Just, real quickly, just looking at staff to see if we're.
You mean during the headlights?
If anyone else has any questions or.
So Nikki, could you come up to the microphone? We didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So my question, I guess my clarifying question is, we post the staff report tomorrow morning. Our thought was we're sort of reusing our staff report from today.
Correct.
Are there modifications to that that need to be made? Given the motion to include only the maps that are listed? Or we just leave it all, it's intended to be left alone?
And I think we can work on this offline, but I think our, we would include the staff report from today and then the, the new staff report would just indicate the direction provided by the commission tonight.
Correct. I think that would be fine. We can, we can look past the other stuff in the staff report because there's really nothing to change other than we're now focusing on those five maps to be considered on the 10th.
In that case, I think we're good.
What's that?
I think we're, in that case, I think we're good to conclude the meeting if.
Okay, with that then, the meeting is adjourned.